Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of consent statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in the preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 18th, 2023, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the assist at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Present.
Mr. Miniger.
Here.
Mr. Palowski.
Here.
Mr. Smallwood.
Here.
Mr. Vartan.
Present.
President Pro Temp.
President. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, Mayor, would you like to give your report?
I'll be glad to. The Department of Community Programs has a few events coming up, including Fiesta Latina this Friday, September 20th, at 6:00 p.m. on the Village Green, the Doggie Dip at the Aquatic Center Saturday, September 21st, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:45 with separate sessions for small and large dogs, and Battle of the Bands on Sunday, September 22nd, beginning at noon on the Village Green. More information on these events can be found at summitcommunityprograms.com. Other news from the DCP is that the paddle courts at Wilson are closed until reconstruction is complete, and the age-two-to-five playground at Maybe Playground has been removed as part of the Village Green Phase III Improvement Project. The age-five-to-12 playground at Maybe remains open, and the Maybe Playground Transformation Project will go out to bid shortly, and work is expected to begin late fall. Tonight, I am also looking forward to hearing from Leah Griffith, who is the Chair of our Homelessness Task Force, about the incredible efforts of the task force thus far. Really proud of this group and grateful for the energy and the devotion to this cause. Recently, there have been questions about vacancies in City Hall. While specific details related to personnel matters must remain confidential, I want to assure you that these transitions present a valuable opportunity to strengthen City Hall for the future. Some vacancies stem from long-serving employees retiring, others from individuals pursuing new opportunities or due to personal changes. In one instance, an opening allowed us to promote from within City Hall, demonstrating our commitment to continued professional growth for our city staff. Another allowed us to hire someone from a neighboring town, providing fresh perspectives on our processes. Each change reflects the adaptability of our organization, ensuring we continue to evolve. When the new council and I first took office, we recognized the need to enhance succession planning, and we continue to make this a priority. I am confident in our direction. City Hall remains stable, focused, and fully dedicated to serving our community. Finally, the response to our open positions has been overwhelmingly positive. People want to work here, and that's a great testament to the reputation we've built. As we continue to grow, we are committed to building a City Hall that is tailored for the future, ensuring that we remain agile and responsive to the changing needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will give my report as President Pro Temp. Bear with me tonight. This is obviously my first time running a meeting, so I'll give you a quick update. We have a busy night tonight ahead of us with a few proclamations, three brief presentations, council members swearing in, some resolutions, and some ordinances. In the interest of getting business done efficiently, we will be hearing public comments for anything on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. So any resolutions or ordinance will have public comment, sorry. So there will not, there will be public comment for anything not on the agenda at the end of the meeting. So tonight, if you want to comment in the beginning, it's anything on the agenda, and at the end, it's anything, anything that was not on the agenda. I'm simply trying something new for one meeting, at the advice of some of my professionals, in order to speed up the meeting, we're going to focus on the city business first. It's just a trial, may not work out, but I figured if you got this shot to be council president one time, maybe you try it up. So looking, looking forward to your feedback. You can tell me it was a horrible idea tomorrow. However, I am giving two opportunities for public comments, and tonight, if there was an ordinance for a hearing, you would have an opportunity to comment around that as well. I would like to point out that tonight, we will be moving Resolutions 11461 and 11491 to the next meeting. That was the Teamsters Local Agreement. Our professionals simply need more time to review that. And the bid advertisement of the Parkline Project for Phase III will go to the next meeting. Today, I sent out a recap of the September 3rd council meeting. In this recap, there is a link to the Firehouse that our city employee Megan Trindell completed. I encourage everyone to not only look at the Firehouse video, but I wanted to recognize the talent of Megan for producing such a phenomenal video. Members of City Council met with the Board of Ed this week to discuss Anderson Fieldhouse renovations and the path forward, and I believe the Board of Ed will provide, will be providing some updates as well as the city in the coming weeks. As the mayor mentioned, the paddle courts, we are putting caution tape on those because we are renovating those, but we have deemed that they're not quite up to our standards right now. We don't want anybody to get hurt, and I'm really hoping, I don't want to make promises that I, I can't fulfill, but with Mr. Tucci's help, I think we can potentially get the paddle courts done by Thanksgiving, hopefully.
Well.
It'll be a push. It'll be a push.
Pressure.
It's aggressive, but I reach for it. Some members of council also met with employees of DEP regarding the Salt Brook area that, where the houses are falling into, that the streams need to be stabilized over on Springfield Avenue. So there's a bunch of houses that are, are really suffering over there, so we're working with our city engineer and DEP, as well as our consulting engineer, to try to come up with a game plan there. And finally, I think the last thing, Director Schreger, can you just give a quick update on the Village Green project? I've had a lot of questions about the Village Green. It's all torn up, so I just wanted him to, just for a minute or two, talk about that.
Certainly. The Village Green project, which we identify as the Phase III project, is really the completion of the fourth and final quadrant of the Village Green, which is the southeast quadrant, which also houses the Maybe Playground. Project started about a week and a half ago, and the plans are available online through the GCS Engineering website for viewing, but ultimately, it will kind of mimic what's on the other quadrants, where the, the walkways will be realigned in conformance with the Village Green master plan, lighting will be added, as well as some landscaping and drainage as required. Then, once this is completed, it should time up well with the Maybe Playground, so it kind of will stay under construction by next spring or early summer. We should have both parts of those and both projects finished, so we can enjoy that part of the Village Green.
Thank you. Thanks for giving that update. And, and two more quick items. As you leave here tonight from City Hall, I'm probably not going to explain this correctly. You might be able to explain it better, Rosie, but they put a new light in that piece of art, and it's beautiful now.
Oh, yes.
So if you, as you go out tonight, just take a look at it. It's really special.
They increased the wattage of the lights.
They increased the wattage of the lights, so as you leave tonight, hopefully, it'll be beautiful. And then, the last thing, tonight, one of the first resolutions will be filling the vacancy for council member in Ward Two, and then, at the next meeting, we will be asking for nominations for council president. And I think that is all. We can go on to proclamations.
The first proclamation is going to be Pilgrim Baptist, so Reverend Allen. All right. Can you hear me? Oh, God. It's too tall. That's better. Okay. Whereas Pilgrim Baptist Church is an offspring of the Fountain Baptist Church, originating from Chestnut Avenue in Summit, New Jersey, and whereas Pilgrim Baptist Church was organized in 1929 through the visionary imagination of the late Reverend Henry R. Cooper with the help of a small group of Christian worshippers. The church was chartered in 1929 and incorporated in 1930. Property at 35 to 37 Glenwood Place was purchased in 1931, and whereas the late Reverend Nathaniel Gilmore had visions of building a new Pilgrim Baptist Church, but after eight years of dedicated service, God ended his work here on earth and called him home in 1957, before his dreams materialized. And whereas the late Reverend Lester Glover became successor to Reverend Gilmore during his pastorate, plans were finalized for the construction of the present church site. The church moved from Glenwood Place to 77 Morris Avenue on June 23rd, 1963, and whereas the Reverend Ronald Allen, Sr., was elected interim pastor of the church on June 24th, 1997. Reverend Allen was unanimously elected as the pastor of Pilgrim Baptist Church on June 5th, 1998. Reverend Allen has a long list of accomplishments, and under his leadership, the church has experienced great spiritual growth. And whereas Pilgrim Baptist Church has been a valued presence within the City of Summit for 95 years and continues to be a beacon of light, faith, hope, love, praise, comfort, worship, fellowship, and service. Now therefore I, Elizabeth Fagan, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim September 17th, 2024, as Pilgrim Baptist Church Day in the City of Summit, and ask all citizens to join me in congratulating Pilgrim Baptist Church on the occasion of its 95th anniversary. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 17th day of September in the year 2024. And next proclamation, may I have our Beacon Fire Chapter members who are here. I have Lois Hageman, who's the director. I hope I'm saying these names right. Catherine Biber is the Assistant Registrar, Linda Sealback Historic Events, and Patricia Dixon Black is membership. Hi. Hi, I'm Mrs. Sealback. Okay. Okay. All right. And I was practicing her name all day. It's always awkward. Someday, I'm going to figure out a processor. Whereas, September 17th, 2024 marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. During this week, we celebrate our Constitution and the rights of citizenship that together we enjoy as the people of this proud nation. Now therefore I, Elizabeth Fagan, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim September 17th to September 23rd, 2024 as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 17th day of September in the year 2024. (applause) Maybe we should go someone next to Mayor on your other side. Somebody put somebody on this side, balance you out. Okay. All right. There you go. (laughter) I'm going to start putting tape on. Yes.
Thank you, and congratulations. Moving on, one of our first resolutions, as discussed in closed session this evening, is the vacancy left by Ward Two candidate, or sorry, Councilwoman Lisa Allen, Council Member Palowski.
Thank you. This is Resolution Number 11493. With the resignation of Councilwoman Lisa Allen before her term expired, the governing body must appoint a successor to fill the vacancy. Per our closed-session discussion, council has voted to appoint Mike McTiernan. Mike was a two-term councilman for Ward One, I believe, in the teens, including two terms as council president. He since moved to Ward Two, is eligible to take Ms. Allen's seat, and we are lucky to have him. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Council comments?
Welcome back.
Public comments. You could do it now because it wasn't.
Welcome back.
Any public comments on that one? I'll make a quick, brief comment if there's no more public comments. Mike's been a leader in the community for a long time. He's a mentor, I think, to most of us up here. Greg, I know he's mentored you in the past, and, you know, I think Mike's going to be someone who brings the community together. We're looking for him for leadership, and I know Rosie's very excited to have Mike back. Familiar face. Mike, thanks, thanks so much, and I guess we'll do the swearing in.
I'm sorry, I just, I just found my notes here. Do you mind?
No.
Tonight, we have the pleasure of introducing Mr. McTiernan to our council. Following the recent appointment of Tom Tucci at our last meeting, these introductions are a testament to the council's sound judgment and strategic decision-making. By bringing on individuals with extensive experience and a deep commitment to our community, we are ensuring that Summit is guided by leaders who understand our city's needs and are equipped to navigate its future with confidence. Mike's proven track record as a former council president, combined with Mr. Tucci's decades of municipal management experience, underscores our council's dedication to effective and responsible governance. Their appointments demonstrate our commitment to harnessing the, the experience necessary to maintain a seamless, forward-looking approach in managing Summit's affairs. We are excited to welcome them both on board and look forward to a positive impact they will bring to our city. Thank you. (applause)
Any other comments?
Do the swearing in, Rosie. First, you have to take a vote. All in favor?
Okay, all in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Wishing carries.
Wishing carries.
Congratulations. The Bible's right under there. All her stuff all night.
All right. Ready to do this?
I am, well, yes. I am ready.
Okay. Excellent. Repeat after me. I, Mike McTiernan.
I, Mike Mc, oh. I, Mike McTiernan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of council member Ward Two.
Of council member Ward Two.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
(applause) Councilmember McTiernan will be sitting on the other side. You're too cheap when you take your seats. Take your seat now, right? Yes, please take your seat. On that seat, Mike, you got to come back up here.
I need the Wi-Fi password.
Get that for you tomorrow.
And we will now move on to presentations. Officer Katiga.
All right. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Council President Pro Temp. My, my name is Officer David Katiga. I'm with Summit Police Department. As we're all aware, the Summit Police Department plays, we have placed heavy emphasis on community engagement, and tonight, I am very proud to announce the return of a very popular program, Summit Police Trading Card Program. This program was started in 2004, 2005. This year marks the 20th anniversary of the program, which is now the fifth installment. It's going to run from now through the end of the school year, and the program really aims to, I guess, engage the Summit youth, for them to be more comfortable maybe approaching us. The back of these trading cards, which is very similar to an average baseball trading card, features a picture of all of our officers, from the chief on down to our newest hire, in addition to our city staff within the police department. The Summit Elks here, which by the way, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce some, I'm here tonight with the leadership from Summit Elks. You have Fred Honold, Exalted Ruler, excuse me. You have Fred Wolf and John DiSocio. So Summit Elks are very active within our community, and they are, they were very kind enough to sponsor this program. So without them, this program probably would not exist. So I definitely want to thank them for that. They, the Summit Elks, have a featured trading card as well. On the back of these trading cards will be either a bio of the police officer, or the history of, say, the Elks, or their mission statement, as well as our Summit patch. This year, for the first time, we have Mayor Elizabeth Fagan has a trading card featured. Oh, yeah, that's going to be a hot item. So, but as I said, I'm very excited to launch this program. This program is going to run through the end of June. Next year, National Night Out in August 2025, we will announce a winner, or winners, I should say, of the trading card program. All these children who, I guess, collect a certain number of trading cards, their names get entered into a raffle for prize drawing at the end of the year. And so we'll, we'll determine at a later date the number of winners and which prizes they, they will receive. With that, I'll just turn it over to Fred here. Wants to say a few words.
Special thanks, honored to be here in front of the council. A few months back, good friend, mutual friend Edgar Mukavas came to me and said, I've got an idea for you. He said the Summit Police Department is having their 20th anniversary of the trading card. Now, as I look up here at the dais, we have a number of Summit Elks right behind you. We love to partner in town for all worthy causes, and we couldn't think of a better one than partnering with the Summit Elk, with the Summit Police Department, basically to bring children in a very friendly fashion to connect with our officers. Now, I'm going to do you the honors here of giving you the first set of Elk cards that we have, but I also want to note that I do have two special ones that are collector items already. A Mayor Fagan and an Officer Katiga. And without anything further disclosure, each has a personal message on the back, so if you want to find Mayor Fagan's, you got to get a copy of this card. But with that, we really are honored to be here. One final note, all four of my children went through the Summit School System, and when they went through, I was amazed at how they just loved being here at our schools. I was asked by Officer Katiga to be there at the Dear Graduation. Now, all grammar schools represented, I have never seen them as enthusiastic before, and I credit that fully to Officer Katiga. So with that, our former Exalted Ruler, current trustee, and a lot more, too many to mention, Rick Wolf.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you, thank you, Dave, for bringing this idea to fruition. I think as everybody knows, the Elks Lodge and Summit is an integral part of the community, and, and we're very proud that this was brought to us and that we can support it. I'm disappointed that these cards will not alleviate any of my parking tickets in town, but, but it is very special. The Elks believe in supporting our first responders, our police force, as well as our fire department, first aid squad, and we look forward to moving this program forward, and we look forward to working with City Council and, and the police department and the other first responders in, in doing some type of event, which we'll work on later this year. Thank you very much.
And that's it. That's all I have to say. We will be putting out basically a list of, of names, cards that are maybe featured every other week, such as maybe members of the Detective Bureau, or administrative staff, such as our, you know, our chief and our captains. So be on the lookout for that. I just want to thank Megan Trindell for her hard work, Nikki Griffiths, and actually, I'd like to mention Sergeant Tom Rich. He's the one who initially introduced this program in 2004, 2005, so we're just continuing on that, that tradition. Like I said, it's a huge hit with kids, and it just, just further solidifies our position within this community and continues on with our goals of engagement with, with not just residents, but our youth. All right? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
(applause)
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Jim.
I always thought I could have.
Sure. You won't find it on eBay.
You want to get the picture?
I wonder how they distribute the cards. The cops carry their own card around. I mean, I can't ask anyone. (laughter)
And now, we will have our Affordable Housing Attorney, Nancy Holm, give an update for Affordable Housing.
Good evening, Mayor Fagan.
Nancy, I'm sorry, can you just move your microphone a little bit closer?
Sorry. Is that better? Is that better? Okay, sorry. I'm not usually quiet, so. Good evening, Mayor Fagan, President Pro Temp Hamlet, and members of the City Council and members of the public. The latest Affordable Housing update news is that the city was required, based upon the amendments to the Fair Housing Act, that were signed into law in March of this year to provide trust fund and unit monitoring to the Department of Community Affairs. The city's municipal housing liaison, Stephanie Sulios, and administrative agent Mark Leggington worked very hard to input the data into the new DCA database, which launched only two weeks before the deadline, and expected every municipality to enter 30 years of data into a system by yesterday. And my office also sent hard copies and emails to the DCA to ensure that the reporting deadline was met. I want to thank Stephanie and Mark for all of their hard work over the past two weeks. It was an impossible task, and they did an incredible job. The city created the Mount Laurel Subcommittee, which has been meeting since March of this year to work on recommendations for the city on how to complete its round three responsibilities, as well as begin planning for round four, which is set to begin on July 1st of 2025. An overview of the city's numbers, the city lacks enough vacant land to satisfy the past two rounds' worth of obligations, so the court approved the city's vacant land adjustment, which makes the city's actual number, also called a realistic development potential, 36. There's also going to be a test when I'm done, so that you all remember all of this. The remainder of its, of the total is called the unmet need, and that number is 702. The DCA will be coming out with round four numbers at the end of October. For now, the focus for the city is to finish round three, which ends July 1st of 2025. The city has fully satisfied its RDP of 36 and has a surplus of 13 credits going toward its unmet need from already-built units within the city. The city has also implemented six overlay zones to capture units in likely places where the city could possibly redevelop in the future. Unmet need is an aspirational goal, and the city has put based upon the amendments to the Fair Housing Act that were signed into law in March of this year, to provide trust fund and unit monitoring to the Department of Community Affairs. The city's municipal housing liaison, Stephanie Sulios, and administrative agent Mark Lackington worked very hard to input the data into the new DCA database, which launched only two weeks before the deadline, and expected every municipality to enter 30 years of data into a system by yesterday. And my office also sent hard copies and emails to the DCA to ensure that the reporting deadline was met. I want to thank Stephanie and Mark for all of their hard work over the past two weeks. It was an impossible task and they did an incredible job. The city created the Mount Laurel Subcommittee, which has been meeting since March of this year to work on recommendations for the city on how to complete its round three responsibilities, as well as begin planning for round four, which is set to begin on July 1st of 2025. An overview of the city's numbers, the city lacks enough vacant land to satisfy the past two rounds' worth of obligations. So the court approved the city's vacant land adjustment, which makes the city's actual number, also called a realistic development potential, 36. There's also gonna be a test when I'm done, so that you all remember all of this. The remainder of the total is called the unmet need, and that number is 702. The DCA will be coming out with round four numbers at the end of October. For now, the focus for the city is to finish round three, which ends July 1st of 2025. The city has fully satisfied its RDP of 36 and has a surplus of 13 credits going toward its unmet need from already-built units within the city. The city has also implemented six overlay zones to capture units in likely places where the city could possibly redevelop in the future. Unmet need is an aspirational goal, and the city has put all of the mechanisms in place that are required that will help it capture units with new projects, including a multifamily set-aside ordinance across the entire city. The city also has a separate termite settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center that states the summit shall take all reasonable steps needed to achieve the goal of facilitating the construction of 50 new rental or ownership units within the city in 100% scattered site affordable housing developments. This 50 new units language are also units that apply to the city's unmet need. And the city has until July 1st of 2025 to demonstrate that it has facilitated the construction of those units. As you can see from the city's website, 32 of the 50 have been zoned for, built, approved, or in the planning stages. We have had a tremendous interest in creating affordable units by members of the community within Summit, and the Subcommittee has explored options with them. And most are in the infancy planning stages, as the city works with these members of the public to see what can be built and what the options are for potential projects, if at all. Because there's nothing concrete yet, that is all I can report on these items. While the city can't comment on the details yet, the city is also working with several developers and affordable housing providers to complete the remaining 18 units. I hope to be able to report on at least some of these projects to the public in my October update. The Habitat for Humanity project is built, and Habitat has closed on three of the 12 units so far, with more closings to come. The Subcommittee and the city's affordable housing professionals are also working on round four recommendations and necessary tasks related to preparing the city's round four housing element and fair share plan, which must be adopted and submitted to the state's new administrative entity, called the program, by June 30th of 2025. As I stated previously, the new numbers for round four are scheduled to come out from DCA in late October. But for now, the Subcommittee is exploring recommendations for the council. Part of that planning process was also for the Subcommittee was to develop a recommended developer engagement process, which is before the council tonight is a resolution to adopt as a formal process. This way, the city and developers have a chain of communication and a process by which developers can have projects possibly included in the affordable housing plan that cannot be created as of right with the city's existing zoning. These projects can be considered in a meaningful way, and the city can make informed decisions about how to plan for round four. My intention is to bring an update to the public, hopefully once a month, in the city's affordable housing accomplishments and planning for round four. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any questions from council members? Appreciate that update.
I do, actually. Just curious, what's delaying the process for filling those units for the Habitat?
They're for sale units, so it's the same process as buying a condominium unit. There's loan documents and they have to be approved. They also have the extra step of requalifying the households as low and moderate income households. So sometimes that just takes some time. So they're following the process, they have an administrative agent that does everything, it's just a...
But they have applicants that are just going through the process?
Yes, they're just in the process of doing all the closings now.
Thank you for your update, thank you for all your efforts, appreciate it. Next, we would call up Leah Griffith to give an update on the mayor's task force for the unhoused in Summit.
Good evening, thank you for having me. First, I wanted to say thank you to the mayor and to the council for forming the task force to address such an important issue in our community. I applaud all of your efforts in forming a wide and diverse group of people to address this tough issue. For those that are not aware, our group consists of representatives from the Summit Police Department, Summit Fire, Summit First Aid Squad, Bridges, Family Promise, Summit Warmhearts, Brideway, Grace, SHIP, the Summit Foundation, Other Fellow First Foundation, Downtown Business Owners, Residents, the Summit Public Schools, Clergy, and Overlook Medical Center. We're a big group. We're fortunate to have such a dedicated, talented group of individuals willing to work together for the most vulnerable in our community. So why was there a need for this task force? Just to give you a little background, over the last year, concerns and complaints from downtown business owners, area private schools using the train, and concerns residents grew, particularly on Union Place and around the train station. The Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad responded to over 280 calls related to alcohol and unhoused individuals in the first eight months of this year alone. The Summit Police Department responded to likely three to four times that amount. Critical emergency response systems were being taxed. Most importantly, a growing sense that what we were doing is not working and a growing concern for the health and well-being of the unhoused in our community. So what is our unhoused population? Nearly all of the unhoused in our town did not lose their housing in Summit, but have adopted Summit as their home. Many have experienced trauma or other difficult situations. Mental health issues and alcohol misuse are prevalent. However, I would urge you to not consider the group a monolith, each has a unique story. So what are we doing? We first met on June 17th as a group of 25. Since then, we have met over 15 times in a variety of breakout groups to understand the problem, the resources, and solutions. We've conducted near-weekly outreach sessions at the train station with Bridges, Brideway, Summit First Aid Squad, and the Summit Police Department, talking and offering resources, reaching out to our unhoused. Summit Police Department has enforced existing ordinances like public urination, open container, and jaywalking. We've begun to connect to county and state resources to ensure that we are utilizing existing shelter and existing resources. We've toured two Union County shelters to understand what is available. We've worked with existing service providers in town to ensure we are working together and working toward the goal of housing, not comfort in being unhoused. We're working on obtaining additional case management resources to ensure that all interactions are case management forward. We've already begun to see some improvement in the environment around the train station and on Union Place. So what are we doing now? We have a stated goal of housing our unhoused by November 15th. This will not be easy, and it will require considerable effort, consistency, and resources. But we are optimistic with the group working together that we can meet this goal. We're working creatively with state and county resources and private funding to exhaust all shelter and housing options. We've increased weekly outreach to twice a week, and we have a weekly triage group that is meeting to case manage each individual. What do we need from you? I have two requests for my fellow citizens. Please don't offer money to any of our unhoused friends. If someone is panhandling, call the non-emergency number, please. We have some amazing organizations in town that will make great use of your generosity to help the unhoused. Bridges, Family Promise, SHIP, any of the houses of worship. Handing out money makes our city less safe and makes the job of this task force more difficult. Unfortunately, your money will likely be used for alcohol. If you see something, say something. If you see someone in need or in an unusual situation that is non-emergent, call the non-emergency police number, they want to know. The more we know, the more we can help and connect resources. I want to thank you all for your support, I ask for your patience. Please reach out and let us know what you are seeing, good and bad. Together, I feel really strongly that we can solve this problem with compassion and care. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Leah, and thank you for all your volunteer work at the EMS. It's just what you're doing is truly impactful and meaningful for the community. I will tell you, I sat in the mayor's task force last week, and it's just an amazing group of people. They're working so hard. And as Leah said, the most important thing is case management. The more we can figure out the different buckets in which people need help, we can truly try to get them help. I'm working right now with Robin Tanner, trying to contact Union County so that we can get vouchers. So for unhoused, they actually can get priority for certain housing vouchers. So we're gonna be working really hard this week and next week to try to get our hands on some more vouchers for those folks. So thank you very much. Now you're gonna open the public comment. Okay, at this time, this is public comment for items already on the agenda. At this point in the meeting, council welcomes comments from any member of the public about issues that are on topics of tonight's business agenda. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please provide a copy to the city clerk and email at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. I did try to get rid of the clock, but apparently the other timer is not working, so I apologize, it's my first time. If you come up, please state which resolution you are speaking about. Council members, this is your opportunity to listen and pay attention, because when we go through the ordinances and resolutions, it's important to remember the comments in case you want to take any of those into account.
I want to address the Affordable Housing presentation, is that okay?
It was on the agenda, so.
Okay.
Yep, it was on the agenda.
Vicky Letterman, Clark Street. Several years ago, I wrote to council after I had read that Rutgers published a study, a survey. Forty-seven percent of the single-family homes in Newark in that particular year, it was a couple of years ago, that were owner-occupied, single-family homes were bought by hedge funds and investment companies and turned into rentals, and typically overpriced rentals, and non-maintained. And the trend is moving to the suburbs, it's not just cities like Newark. So I wrote council several years ago and asked if they would consider some kind of protection for Summit to prevent that from happening. And I don't know what that is, I'm not an attorney. Because I think you have to do that, you would need to do that well in advance, not when it actually is on your doorstep, because then it looks like you're affecting a particular developer. I got no response. I would like to present it again. Also, we have a number of areas in town, I believe down by the Marco Polo is one, where a developer is buying up land on spec and subdividing it in order to build more units without any affordable housing in it, because it's more than one lot. And I think that's unconscionable. And I would propose that what difference does it make how many lots it is, or even when it is? Why isn't it a per-developer? You build four houses on spec, the fifth one you build is affordable, wherever it is, whenever it is. You don't want to do that, then you don't do business anymore in Summit if you've built four houses. I don't think it should matter that, you know, I think this developer wants to build six units. So in order not to build an affordable one, he's dividing the lot in half and building three and three. I mean, you know, we have Nancy here, so maybe you can say whether I'm correct or not. Anyway, I think we need some innovative ideas, and I think those are very palatable. One thing that I don't think can be done, unfortunately, I live in the least expensive neighborhood in Summit, and we have a particular builder, every time a ranch house comes on the market, he buys it, tears it down, builds a McMansion. It's private property, you can't avoid that. But I wish there was a way, because we're losing the least expensive houses in Summit and like tripling their price. I think that's a shame, thank you.
Sorry, my microphone is off, thank you for your comment. Any other public comments for items on the agenda?
Good evening, Diego Hoic, Naranagal Court. Why has this council made it impossible for the public to comment on six of the 16 resolutions on the agenda? Why did you open up these resolutions for comment now, when these items are, quote, "pending closed session," end quote? So there is zero information about them in the agenda packet. How is the public expected to know what was discussed during those sessions at this stage in the meeting? The alternative you offered to the public is to wait and comment on an item after you have voted on it. How does this allow the public to make informed comments or be heard? In short, what are you trying to achieve? Traditionally, Summit residents have been allowed to comment on every ordinance or resolution as it's being discussed by council. Has debate resulted in long contentious meetings in the past? Sure. Should debate be avoided, because a meeting could get contentious or run long? Whatever your plan may have been when you made this change, I submit to you that the dog ate the plan, then a bad hombre ate the dog, and now it is just a concept of a plan. I will end by quoting then-candidate Bob Palowski, quote, "When did it become uncivil to ask tough questions? Our children are watching. We do them a profound disservice when we stay in our lane and go with the program. We must teach our children to ask questions fearlessly, to demand honest answers, to learn to think for themselves. Summit deserves no less from this council."
Thank you for your comment. Thank you, Diego. Are there any other public comments for items on the agenda? I'm sorry, sir, can you state?
Mark Goldfarb, Tangled with Drugs.
And can you tell us the resolution that you?
Well, someone can we ask a question about what she brought up about the homeless people in Summit and what they're doing?
Sure, go ahead.
One is, how big of a problem is it? How big of a problem is it in Summit? How many people are we, you know, talking about how large of a population is it? And two, it was mentioned that they're being rehomed or helped. Where are they being homed and helped? Is it in Summit? I mean, what are we doing with them? I didn't understand, you know, when she was explaining.
Sure.
It was in such generalities, I'd like to know a little specific. Are we talking about six people, 12 people, 100 people? How big of a problem is it?
Thank you, thank you for your comment, we can certainly discuss that tonight as a council mayor, you can probably give some, because it's a good question.
I mean, I can weigh in on a couple of things. So, you know, there's a larger population, and there's a population that is really the focus right now. That's 17 individuals that have been identified across all of the service organizations that are providing care and assistance between, you know, the PD and Warmhearts and Grace and Bridges and all of those organizations. And so we're trying to, and actually Leah mentioned, the small sort of subgroup triaging each of those individuals as individuals. And so what, you know, we're not in, the process is ongoing. They have not been sheltered yet, that's the goal. And so the resources are from state, county, and then locally. So it's a collaboration of a lot of moving parts. And I think Leah's doing an excellent job of coordinating those efforts and those conversations.
Are there any other public comments on items on the agenda? With that, we will close public comments. However, there will be some comments on your one, Greg, correct?
Council President Protemp, I think it's helpful to explain to the public that the items that were pending closed session discussion, you will give the opportunity to the public to comment on those as they occur.
Yes. Okay. Moving on to ordinances for introduction, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance for introduction 11473?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter A, Schedule of Fees, Appendix, and Chapter Four, General Licensing, Section 4-3, Automatic or Electronic Amusement Games, Pinball, Video, or Arcade Amusement Games, subsection 4-3.4, Issuance of License and Term.
Councilwoman Miniger?
Thank you, Council President Protemp.
Thank you, Council President Protem. This is an ordinance that will amend Chapter A, Schedule of Fees, Appendix, and a subsection of 4-3.4 under Chapter Four that deals with the fees associated with licenses for automatic or electronic amusement games such as pinball, video games, or other arcade amusement games. This ordinance will change the fee for obtaining a one-year license to operate those types of games in a business to simply $250 per machine, per machine. This is a change from a license fee that varies based on the number of machines that you operate, ranging from one hundred and forty currently to one hundred, to $695. The $250 fee brings us in line with nearby cities such as Morristown, Westfield, and Chatham, where they sure play me in pinball, I've heard. I move to introduce this ordinance.
And I second. Any council comments? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call vote?
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
And President Protem Hamlet?
Aye.
Motion passes. And the hearing will be on? The hearing will be on October eighth. Right. Moving on to resolutions, the first one, as I mentioned earlier, 11461, we will be having at the next meeting potentially pending Mr. Giacobi's guidance. So we are moving on to Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President Protem. This is number 11497, and per closed session discussion, this resolution amends the consulting services agreement with Sixth Avenue Consulting LLC, from where we obtain the services of our interim city administrator, Mr. Tom Tucci. This extends that agreement for an additional two months into November 2024 for an additional amount of $12,000 per month, and I move to adopt this resolution.
And I second.
Council President Protem?
Yes.
I'm just wanting to announce, I'm going to, since I wasn't in closed session, I'm going to recuse myself on the finance resolution, the capital projects and community service resolution, the community programs and service resolution, and the first one of safety and health.
Very good, thank you. Any other council comments? And then since this one was in closed session, if there are any comments from the public, happy to listen to comments from the public on that one. Okay. And so we will go for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Madam President. Okay. This resolution did not appear, this is resolution ID number 11439, it did not appear in our public-facing agenda packet, so in the interest of transparency and per our closed session discussion, I will now read the ordinance, or read the resolution rather. Whereas, the common council, upon the recommendation of the Mount Laurel Subcommittee, finds that it is necessary to establish a process by which the city can uniformly process proposed affordable housing projects from developers for consideration of inclusion in the city's plan for satisfying its constitutional obligation to provide its fair share of affordable housing now and in the future, and whereas the Mount Laurel Subcommittee has deliberated and proposed a process to the common council for its consideration and implementation, and whereas the common council has considered the recommendations of the Mount Laurel Subcommittee and has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to implement the recommended process from the Mount Laurel Subcommittee, and now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Summit. The City, the City of Summit's developer implementation process shall be as follows. One, the developer will request an introductory meeting with the development facilitation group following an expression of an interest in proposing a project not otherwise permitted as of right via the city's current zoning ordinance that includes affordable housing units. And two, the development facilitation group will then contact the developer to request documentation for the proposed project and will schedule an introductory meeting with the developer. And three, the developer will prepare and submit the material requested to the development facilitation group. And four, the development facilitation group, within approximately thirty days, will review the materials submitted by the developer prior to the introductory meeting, hold an introductory meeting, and then prepare a summary and analysis of the proposed project to the Mount Laurel Subcommittee for review. And five, upon receipt of the summary from the development facilitation group, the Mount Laurel Subcommittee will review the proposed project at the next available meeting. And six, the Mount Laurel Subcommittee will prepare and submit its recommendation to the members of the governing body for review. And seven, the members of the governing body in closed session at the next available meeting, from its receipt of the Subcommittee's recommendation, will review the Subcommittee's recommendation and any supporting documents, and will decide whether to move forward with discussions and the developer about inclusion of the project into the city's affordable housing plan. And eight, upon direction of the governing body, the city's administrator will contact the developer. And nine, the developer will decide how to move forward by taking action that may include, but is not limited to, request for rezoning, submission to the zoning board and/or planning board, proceed as of right, request review of an amended concept plan by the development facilitation group, Mount Laurel Subcommittee, or withdraw its proposed project from consideration. The development facilitation group shall consist of the following members: the city administrator, the city's municipal housing liaison, the city's planner, and the city's affordable housing council. So, that was a lot of talking for me just then. But I want to just, so, so we've talked, there, there has been a lot of discussion in this community about affordable housing. What has been discussed this year is implementing a process and being transparent and public about what that process is. Council President Protem Hamlet and I agreed that the way to be most transparent about doing that is to formalize it in the form of a resolution. The resolution, it's not just me talking, we will put it up on the website. But now that, once we, once we have this established, nobody up here can change it without having a resolution, and it will be clear to the community what is happening internally when a request is made that relates to affordable housing. So, I'm supportive of it, and I will leave it at that, except to say I make a, I motion, I move to adopt the resolution.
And I second. Are there any council comments? I have one. I know that we've, I just want to explain to the public, as Greg had said, I think this is something that Councilman Vartan and myself, as well as our attorney Nancy Holm, the mayor, the Mount Laurel Subcommittee has been working really hard on. So we've been going back and really fine tuning this, this resolution. I think it's going to be a really good thing for the community and obviously welcome any advice from our new council member or our new interim city administrator. So at this time, we can take comments from the public since this was in closed session on this topic. Are there any members from the public that would like to ask, make a comment about the resolution number 11439?
Mark Goldfarb. So what's going to happen with all the applications that came in prior to this resolution? Are they going to be susceptible? Are they going to be applied to this and have to start the process all over again? Or are they going to be grandfathered in to the way you've been handling it up to this point?
Do we want to have Nancy?
So we, let me get this, sorry. We formulated this process and any developers that have come in since the process has begun, we've started implementing it. So all the developers, no one has to start all over again. It's, we're moving forward from this point so that all developers know that they contact the municipal housing liaison and start the process.
So that means all the ones that have applied up till before now are not grandfathered in and they will continue by whatever process you were using prior to implementing this process? Am I correct?
There, there are only a few, a few projects that are in the pipeline, but they've been using this process. So there, there aren't any that are grandfathered in, to use your term, so.
Thank you for your comment.
Can I just add one more? Thank you, Council President. I, I think it's fair to say, it, I think it's fair to say for a while that this process in essence has what, has been what is the practice of city staff and of the council even before, even before the creation of the Mount Laurel Subcommittee. However, we are in a somewhat charged environment surrounding affordable housing, and we've been talking for a while about the need to be as transparent about it as possible. And saying we have a process is good. Actually implementing, writing it down and then sharing it with you, I think is better. So that's what we're doing here.
Thank you, Councilman Vartan. At this point, we will take a, take a vote.
You should do a voice vote.
Do a voice vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Smallwood?
Thank you. Council Protem. This is ID number 11486, to declare vacancies, vacancy in parking services agency administrative assistant. Last meeting, we had announced that we had hired a new parking director, which was within, and Nicole Swickie has done a fabulous job so far, so this position is to replace her old position so that she has an assistant to work with. So I move to adopt this resolution.
And I second.
Are there any council comments? At this time, if there are member of, if any member of the public would like to comment about this resolution, feel free to come forward. Seeing none, we will go for a vote. Voice vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Councilmember Boyer?
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution ID number 11485, which authorizes the appointment of Anthony Mana as a police officer. Anthony is currently enrolled in the Passaic County Police Academy and is expected to graduate and, on September 25th. He holds a Bachelor's of Arts in Criminal Justice from St. John Fisher University, and he has demonstrated a strong work ethic and leadership skills throughout his academic and extracurricular activities. His experience as a teacher assistant, football coach, and team captain highlights his dedication to the community, and he has, he has really good problem-solving abilities. He was the captain of his football team. We spoke, we spoke about that briefly. He's definitely a leader. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
I'm sorry. Are there any council comments? At this time, if any member of the public would like to come up and comment on that resolution, feel free. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And your second one.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution ID number 11462, authorizing the request agreement with the county of Union to permit the installation of a rectangular rapid flashing beacon and a crosswalk at the intersection of Morris Avenue and Butler Parkway. Having grown up a couple of blocks away on Dennis Place, I attended Washington School and I frequently played basketball and football at Tatlock Field, which is now Investors' Bank. But this improvement is something that has been needed for years, and it is crucial that we increase pedestrian safety in our community, particularly at this intersection. And this has been confirmed by the Safety Committee as a necessary measure, and I am extremely happy to announce this resolution. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay. Are there any council comments?
Yes. I'm very happy to see this. I frequent that area very often, and coming out of Butler Parkway onto Morris Avenue, I've seen a lot of kids coming from Tatlock Field rushing over to get to Magic Fountain. So hopefully this will be a much safer opportunity for them to use that flashing beacon light. One of the things I've noticed about the flashing beacon lights is a lot of people don't push the button, and they just stand there. And I would like to caution to everyone, if you do come across a crosswalk that has these flashing beacon buttons, please push the buttons because it does get the attention of the drivers, and especially with Morris Avenue being a very busy street. I hope that this will create much more safety for the kids crossing the street between Magic Fountain and Washington School as well as Tatlock Field. And I look forward to having more of these flashing beacon lights, lights put on to other streets in our town as well.
Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you. Aaron can correct me if I'm wrong on the numbers, but the seven or eight or so flashing beacons have been added around town in the last two or three years that supplement additional four-way stop signs, additional sidewalks, and other traffic calming sorts of measures. Do we have a timeline on when we might expect to see this actually installed?
Yes, through you, Council President. So when dealing with pedestrian traffic safety, and then also when you complicate it by, it's a county road, Morris Avenue is a county road, so the crossing would be across Morris Avenue, it, it's a little bit complex. So this is basically, we have done our study to prove that this is something that should be installed. We have sent it to the county engineering division who concurs with our assessment. We had to make some tweaks to the plan and some of the requirements. So now this is the formal request by the city to have them produce an agreement that we will execute that will give us permission to do so. And then after we have that, assuming probably a six to twelve-week timeline to get it ordered and installed. So when you factor in, you know, two months possibly with the, the legal teams going back and forth, possibly by the end of the year, if not early winter 2025, so.
Thank you.
Any other council comments? Any?
Thank you. Through Council President Protem. Mr. Schreger, you last year talked about the option for those, those signals to be, in some cities, communities, some areas have them on timers, meaning at certain times a day, they automatically are that, that kind of, they're flashing at certain times a day. Have you evaluated this for this particular intersection?
So through you, Council President, if we, if you could just clarify, so this is the push-button activated one, and then they do have flashing beacons that are on a timer that will just flash during school hours. In this area, since this is a high pedestrian trip generation, when you have both the school and the, the ice cream shop, you would want one because there could be people random days, random times, so this is one that would be activated by a pedestrian themselves. I do agree with Councilmember Smallwood, and I appreciate that. I don't see the hit rate I'd like to have in terms of hitting the button, and it's really not a big effort to do so, so please, you know, follow his recommendation to hit it, but at this intersection, you'd want one that gets hit. But we did have at the school previously, and might still be even at Lincoln Hubbard, that it is on a timer, which, you know, can help. The problem is when you have cancellations, when you have school schedules that change, sometimes the technology isn't there, you just can't do it rapidly, so.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Miniger. I think it's a really good point. I hadn't thought about it. What I will say is when I think about that timing of crosswalks, Summit Avenue comes to mind. There have been a few occasions where if we have a crossing guard mix-up, and it's just such a, to your point, it'd be great to get the school ones on a timer, if we could. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you. So we've been working on this for, I don't know, eight and a half months, right? So I get frustrated with the timing, but, you know, it is when you're working with the county, this is on a county road, there's a lot that goes into it and a lot of following up, and the county's not always in the biggest rush, or they have a pile this high, and yours, yours starts off on the bottom, so I'm really glad that we're able to finally do this. If you, if you grew up in this town and you walked to Tatlock, right, you come out of the high school, and you'd like to cross on Weaver if you can, then you don't have to worry about crossing down there, but if the cars are coming and you can't, you always just hang a left, and then you're playing Frogger when you get down to Magic Fountain on your way to, to the Field House. So I'm glad we could finally do this, and I think, Aaron, you can tell me if I'm all wet on this, but I think this may also help with turning left onto Morris Ave, off of Butler. When a pedestrian's crossing on that crosswalk, the traffic will have to stop, and people who are waiting to go left will be able to go too, which has also been an issue down there.
Yes, through you, Council President. It will have some ancillary benefits, that that might be one of them. We are also looking at other implementations that we might consider in the in that corridor. The previous study didn't show we should do anything in terms of timing restrictions for those turns, but having this and a formal stop will, will help alleviate some of the turns there. So yes.
Thank you.
One question, please.
Yes, go ahead.
Can I ask, Aaron, will this installation have the backup generator component, whereas if you had a power failure, you put a generator on it, and it would continue to function?
Through you, Council President. So I believe it'll have the option. It is solar-powered, so they do generally work pretty well in this location, because it doesn't have big tree coverage. So we're pretty confident it will work, but like every mechanical thing, it will be subject to failures and replacements, so we'll, we'll stay on top of it.
Okay.
Thank you. One other thing I wanted to mention, the sign for Butler and Morris is mixed up. So you think Butler is Morris, and Morris is Butler. I don't know who would be responsible for fixing that, but you might want to put that on.
We have this really cool app called See Click Fix.
I should have done it.
Nice plug.
Since we're here.
Yes, it would be our responsibility, but see, if you see, I mean, just to the general public, if you see things like that, put it in See Click Fix. We'll take care of it. I don't know if a truck hit that, or if it was kids, but it does happen, so we'll fix it.
And the other thing I'd like to mention is, I think we officially can put these, if they start in safety, let's just keep them in safety. We're going to have Director Schreger sign off on these, but it makes the most sense to keep the rapid flashing beacons in, in safety. So you can have all the rest of them. Okay. At this point, we'll, no, public comment.
Did you offer public comment?
Oh, it wasn't. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah. With that being said, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're moving on to the consent agenda, right? Yes. Okay. So for the consent agenda, we are pulling, we are not moving forward with ID 11491, which was the authorizing the bid advertisement for the Parkline project. Was not quite ready for primetime tonight, so just for the record, we're pulling that one out. Would anybody else like to pull anything out of the consent agenda?
Just call for a motion to approve the council agenda, consent agenda.
So I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Almost tripped me up on that one. Okay. So now, it's about 8:50. We welcome public comment on anything that was not on the agenda. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please provide a copy to the City Clerk, or email cityclerk@cityofsummit.org to help facilitate an orderly meeting, as we mentioned again. Please limit your comments to three minutes, state your name, and just remember that it is public comment, so we won't have a dialogue back and forth.
Cool. Well, I was going to ask a question. I don't know if I'll get an answer, but we'll see. The ID 11491.
Your name, sir.
Oh, sorry. Corbin Schwartz, Henry Street. For 11491, authorizing the bid advertisement, Parkline Project Phase Three, do you know what the source of the delay is on that, and why we are not discussing that today? And also, when might we expect to discuss that?
Well, I am going to answer that one, because I know it's really important. We were, we were hoping, and Aaron, you can sort of jump in here, I think the Parkline, just so for members of the public, the Parkline, in many different forms, has been presented at council. I think, Rosie, how many times has it been presented at council?
Too many to count.
But with that being said, there were certain phases, and I believe this was supposed to, I can't remember, Director Schreger, when we were supposed to, they were supposed to start Phase Three. Might have been July, I can't remember the exact timeline. But we got the plans back from Suburban Consulting, I believe. It was about, Director Schreger, what date was that?
I believe about, yeah, a week or, a week or two ago, but probably 10 days.
About 10 days ago. So we are, we finally are sending our final comments. They're about 90% complete. We were sending our final comments, so Director Schreger has a timeline for the next month or so about meeting, engaging with the residents, especially residents like yourself down on Henry Street, showing you the screening options again. Councilmember Vartan and I have been going rounds about this one for a while. I know it's really important for all of us, and I know, you know, we take your concerns down there very seriously. So we can get out something this week, I think, on that communication. Correct, Director Schreger?
Yeah, just to provide an update on the timeline, so in the next day or two, residents that abut the, this phase of the Parkline, which is from Morris Avenue to Russell Place, will receive a letter inviting them to a meeting we'll be hosting under the Russell Place Bridge next Wednesday, the 25th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. It'll also direct them to the website, which will have the renderings and plans posted. So the residents, and really any resident, can view it and make comments and reach out to us. And the meeting itself, though, we're only sending the invitation to those abutting it, obviously, anyone is welcome to stop by. We'll hope for good weather. If not, we'll send out an update that we'll have at City Hall.
Great, thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
Hi. Apologies, my voice, I've lost it. Brandon Sternberg for Dale Drive. I wanted to ask Town Council for an update on the initiation and the initiative to install a sidewalk on Ashland Road between Rotary Drive and Silver Lake Drive. Wanted to thank Ms. Hamlet, Mr. Smallwood, Mr. Boyer, Mr. Schreger for reaching out to my wife, Ally Sternberg, and I, after she spoke at the July 30th council meeting about the safety concerns. Your comments, as well as the rest of Town Council, was encouraging. So thank you on that. As a refresher for everybody listening online and here in the room, there is no sidewalk on Ashland Road between Rotary Drive and Silver Lake Drive. Ashland Road is a main road, a county road, with a 35 mile per hour speed limit, which cars often exceed. Walking eastbound on Ashland, you are forced to walk with your back towards traffic, and taking the risk that someone driving cannot see you. For those in a wheelchair or pushing a stroller, there's no alternative option. It's not feasible to walk on someone's lawn. As we are entering the fall months, it's getting darker earlier, which is expediting and making the risk even greater. So currently, as of today, September 17th, we have about 228 residents who have signed the petition requesting that the town prioritize a sidewalk between Rotary and Silver Lake. It's my understanding that a DAR was open on August 6th for the town to further investigate, and the matter was routed to the appropriate department head and the Safety and Health Committee. Thank you. So I have three questions. One, has the item been further discussed at the Safety and Health Committee, and what are next steps? Two, what is the latest status of the reissuance of the sidewalk installation and maintenance plan? And will the portion of Ashland Road we're speaking about be on the priority list? And then three, what further action needs to be taken to further push this along? My wife and I constantly get stopped asking, like, when, when we're walking, hey, what's the latest on the sidewalk? So I think, answer to these three questions above will promote transparency and help, you know, everybody in the room and online listening be informed. And again, I want to thank everybody for prioritizing, and glad we're getting the motions moving, and it's very encouraging. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Director Schreger, I want to answer this one, because I know we've been talking about it a lot, so.
Yes, a couple items, just to point out and try to answer the three questions. I have not been at a safety meeting where it was discussed, but based on some of the council members who are, as feedback, I know, I feel like it has been discussed, so it is not forgotten. So that's, so I believe it has been discussed at safety, and if not, it will be, end at CAPS as well as we move forward. In terms of the reissuance of the sidewalk installation and maintenance plan, yes, it is definitely a high goal of the department to finish that as quickly as possible. I was hoping we had it done, but obviously, we've had some staffing and workload issues that made it a little bit challenging, but we are very close with that. So we hope to circulate that within the next week or two to the two committees, CAPS and Safety, for then a possible vote in the second October or first November meeting. And at this time, I think we appreciate the residents, you know, preparing the petition and reaching out, so it definitely will be a priority project in there. I don't think there's anything that, that can be done right now, other than the process to play out. So we should just set some expectations that a sidewalk won't appear there by the end of the year, because in addition to having the plan and then developing plans, which will be unique and tricky in itself, because that is an area of, you know, Ashland, it does have the Plymouth rear-facing properties and a lot of trees. So there is some, some questions that will have to be looked at. Once we get a survey, we would could better assess, and then assess cost as we go into the 2025 capital budget planning. So, so I guess we are, we're moving on as quick as we can, and we'll provide updates when we have them.
Okay. Thank you, Director Schreger.
Do you want to comment? I mean, we've discussed this at length at the Safety Committee, and I think the next step is sending it to CAPS for insights on budget, you know. But from, from a safety perspective, we looked at it. We didn't see, no one had any objections to it. But I think we need to look at cost. So I think in the CAPS Committee, you know, see what's feasible, see what can be done. But the committee didn't have any objection to the sidewalk, so.
Yeah. And I would just add one thing. Mr. Sternberg, he, he characterizes this as a sidewalk between Rotary and Silver Lake. And I've also heard some folks would want to just continue it right on to Mountain, so that, so that you don't have to go around Plymouth. I've taken a good look at it out there, and there are no trees, really, that would be in the path of the sidewalk between Rotary and Silver Lake. And I don't think we'd have to even move any telephone poles. So from a safety perspective, I really think we could use it there, and I don't think that you have those other concerns. Between Silver Lake and Mountain, there, there are what I probably think are 100-year-old trees taking up a lot of space, would, would be right in the path of the sidewalk. So whether it's feasible there or not, I don't think should delay us moving forward on the stretch between Rotary and Silver Lake.
I'm sorry, the speed there on Ashland is?
35.
So I have a question for Mr. Tucci. I'll throw this back at you, Tom. I was actually at a webinar the other day, and it was with Hoboken, and I think they were implementing their, I think it's called Net Zero, Vision Zero, Vision Zero. And they talked about, one of the first things they did, I think, in their municipality was they moved the speeding limits to 20 on certain streets. But I've always been told that we can't do that. Is there, like, is there a way to potentially lower some speeds on certain streets? And I don't know, maybe that should be offered to you, Director Schreger, I don't know.
I'll, I'll take a stab at it first, and then he could pick it up from there. What would have to be done was, you'd have to do some sort of a traffic study, first of all, to see what the current condition is. And then you would have to do a proposal and offer some traffic calming, because you just can't all of a sudden hit an area and drop out this from 35 to 20. So it would have to be some traffic calming devices put in. Is it doable? Yes, but there's a process, as the city engineer will tell you. Aaron, you want to come here?
Sure. The, the first part would be a speed study, and I think, you know, depending on the area you're looking at, if it is downtown, you might be shocked to see what the average speed is. It's likely, probably around 20, if, if not lesser. Yes, you have the occasional random car that, that will go faster, especially later at night. It doesn't matter what the speed limit is, they're going to do what they want. And it could have some impact. But you, you have to justify it through the study, and there's, there's all sorts of, you know, methods detailed in both the MUTCD and through USDOT of how you can justify doing it. But then the issue is, how do you post it? Because now, we don't have the speed limit posted downtown right now, so now you'd be throwing up 20 mile an hour signs everywhere. And how do you enforce it? So if you're not going to enforce, and it's not going to change anything, the gain would be minimal, where you're better off just trying to protect your pedestrian vehicle interactions the best you can at the intersection. So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any public, more public comments? Sorry, if you can just come up and state your name.
Carlos Figueroa, 26 Russell Place.
Carlos Figueroa.
I'm going back to the gentleman's question on Russell Place, because I've been hearing so many stories, but I haven't got any correspondence or any, anything related to a parking lot that's going to be, where that walk path is, whatever path it is that they're doing there. And I'm right next door to it. I mean, I haven't received any, any kind of correspondence in reference to anything that's being built there or anything like that, like a parking lot. And if, and if there is something going on there, I mean, I would like to know, because it's going to directly affect not only myself, but all the, all the children in the area. When the rec center kids go through there, right walk through there, they go right to the pool, you've got a couple of hundred kids walking by. And if you have a parking lot there, you know, how is it going to affect the kids walking by there? Number two, who is it going to bring to the area? So I'm not sure if I'm really talking about a parking lot. Is it really happening, or is it just hearsay? So can somebody, you know, at least send me something, or let me know, or is it in the next meeting in reference to what's going on in that area?
Absolutely.
Because I am completely blindsided with all that. All I just hear is what was happening, what's going on.
Director Schreger, do you want to?
Yes. So there were concepts, so it's essentially on the south side of Russell Place, where the Parkline Trail will, this phase will terminate. On the east side of it, there is a portion of land that is owned by Onyx, that there was concepts at times that did include a parking lot there for use of, of the Parkline Trail. This phase will not include that. It will have a stairwell coming down, just like we have at the Morris Avenue intersection with the Parkline, but there's no parking lot now. It's Onyx land, for number one, so we don't have it. And number two, the, the Parkline Committee and, and really our committee had ruled against it at this, this time. So that is not included in this phase of the project. Again, residents starting, you know, tomorrow at some point, will be able to go on the DCS construction page, and they'll, they'll see the plans and the renderings. And they should get the notice by week's end about the, the meeting on, on Wednesday. So.
I think what I'm going to try to do, I actually asked Dr. Rabino, who's one of the main leading efforts behind the Parkline, to actually bring out the old model that he brought out several years ago, just for any new residents that might, you know, want to see the, the old model of the Parkline.
I'm not a resident, I've been there 20, 28 years, and I haven't received one letter of anything that's happened in that particular site. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, sir.
I've been completely.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Next public comment?
Good evening. John Disosio, 17 Styles Road, Summit, New Jersey. First off, I want to say, I want to thank the city and the Department of Public Works for the road improvements. My shocks, thank you. My kidneys, thank you. And I don't know why, people don't come and say thank you for all your good work. You deserve it. I'm a member of the Summit Oaks Lodge for the last 40 years. My committee is drug awareness, and I also chair the Scholarship Committee. The Oaks, on a national basis, give out $4 million annually in scholarships. That doesn't mean we're going to get it all, all $4 million in Summit. But two years ago, we had four winners in Summit. We're trying to beat that. I have notified all the high schools in Summit about our scholarship opportunities. And it's, it's open to seniors, that children are going into the senior year this year. And it's based on aptitude, financial need, and community involvement. So all I can say is, if you're a senior in high school, go to elks.org, apply, and apply for the scholarship. You can, you can go into, now to your, your portal as many times as you like. The other committee is drug awareness. We're having our annual talk on drugs. I gave a copy of this to Rosemary's. So we're having our annual talk on drugs this Sunday, September 22nd, 12:00 noon, at the Oaks. We're going to have various speakers talk about the evil of drugs, how to combat it, and, and also drug rehabilitation personnel that'll talk on how they help people get off drugs. Also, the state of New Jersey, Elks, Elks has a conference down in Long Branch every February, beginning of February, where we send 700 children for a three-day weekend. It's called our Peer Leadership Conference, and they learn about drugs, bullying, peer pressure, and, worth of all, suicide. Last year, a child from committing suicide. I think I ran out of time. I think I ran out of time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comment. And all your hard work. Good evening, Mayor Radus.
Hello, so someone's phone. Uh-oh.
John.
Good evening, my name is Nora Radus and I live at 18 Blackburn Place in Summit. I'm a former mayor of Summit for Mr. Tucci, you don't know me. And I have served for eight years, from 2016 to 2023. I have a few comments, but first I want to welcome Councilman Nick Turner.
It's not the same up here without you.
I know. I'm very happy to see you in Lisa Allen's place and we had certainly many years of very equitable and productive years.
Very much so.
Welcome. And good for you. I'm here to offer a few comments, and not questions, about the decision Mayor Fagan made to hold appointment-only office hours. My comments are based on experience and not mere speculation. Mayor, I understand your reasoning, that you don't want to be speaking with a resident and then another resident stops by and they feel uncomfortable by having to wait for you. That happened to me from time to time, for sure. But either the resident was willing to schedule an appointment, or he or she was willing to wait for a bit. Frankly, many of the hours during my scheduled office hours were spent with city staff. As you, I imagine, I received many emails from residents with questions and concerns, but upon receipt, I did not always have answers for the residents. I had to talk to staff for information that I needed. My office hours were very helpful for me and the staff to have such conversations. They knew when I would be there, as well as gain insights from them as to what their departments were doing and how they might need assistance. Additionally, in this historic time of significant departures of staff from City Hall, many of whom are at the senior management level, I would think, as the leader of our city, Mayor, that you would want to be present and approachable at City Hall to reassure staff and residents that despite some evidence to the contrary, the city may in fact be stable. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. Andrew McCurdy, Parkview Terrace. My comment is about this turnover in city staff in recent weeks and what is going to be done to address it. My understanding is that over the past 40 years, Summit has had something like four city administrators, which is pretty amazing, actually. And so last council meeting, when Mr. Administrator Tucci took the dais, there was no real discussion about what was going on. And from what I can tell, there's never been any real significant explanation of why Administrator Rogers is no longer up on the dais. So setting aside that lack of information, which is confusing and glaring, there remains the important question of how the seat will be filled, how the position will be chosen, not only for that position, but for a number of other city management positions that are vacant in what appears to be an unprecedented exodus from City Hall. So I would ask you to consider what it looks like from the outside, because there's a real concern among residents that this could become a trend in Summit. Consider, to an ordinary citizen who is not privy to what's said behind closed doors at council, you have an election last year, you have a new administration, within months there's half a dozen city staff, civil servants leaving or being pushed out. We don't really know what happened, and being replaced. And so that's a real concern, because is that going to keep happening in the future? Is that a trend? Is that what happens after the next administration change? And that concern and that worry only grows with the continued silence about this from council. So my request for tonight is, once again, more information on the details about the turnover, beyond the cursory summary at the beginning of the meeting. How will the positions be filled? What will the search process be? And I read that there was a proposal circulated among council, at least one proposal, about how that search process could happen. Could put together some sort of search committee that involves residents as well as city staff and elected officials and that, you know, that might solve the problem of insulating the decision-making and preventing against, protecting against this concern that you'll have turnover after each election and people being replaced. So I would urge the council to consider that proposal or something like it that could achieve the same ends to address that concern. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Council President.
I'm going to keep moving forward.
Oh, yeah, we'll do it at the end, right?
Yep, thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Miguel Velez. I'm a resident of 113 Mountain Avenue, and I will be there 40 years in December. I just have two quick questions, not a whole statement, actually simple. It's my understanding that no one is allowed to post political signs or billboards on city property or city offices. Is that correct?
Sir, this is just public comment, if you could just make your comment. Just make your comment, it's just not a back and forth, if you could just make your comment, please.
Well, my comment is going to follow your question because, here, let me make a comment then.
I think there's enough copies for everyone. I think we're going to have to share.
Okay, so my comment is that since August, I've noticed this employee at the transfer station, who is the agent at the gate, has turned her SUV, the back of it into a three-by-five Trump billboard. And she strategically parks it every day at the entrance so that the back is facing the place where people have to drive, so it becomes a very visible sign for the people who go to the transfer station or the free market. Now, she has a right to put that on the back of her vehicle, I don't know what the vehicle laws are, but the way she parks it is for maximum exposure of the Trump sign. If she just parked it the way a normal person would park it, facing the other way, it wouldn't be a problem, it wouldn't be visible. Now, so I see this as a displaying political sign on city property by a city employee. Now, the tacit approval, wink, wink, and a nod, it's okay, sort of reduces the confidence in the administration's integrity. The other thing is that it may give people the impression that you are, that she is doing your bidding. So I give that to you, that is my comment. I think I have 40 seconds left.
Yes, sir.
Which I can use very quickly, follow up on my previous, the previous person. I've heard that there are possibly five to seven people who left, two planned retirements, five administrative retirements. Now, I have been here for 40 years and I'm concerned about the city's bond rating. This turnover has cost us decades of experience and I don't know if that's going to affect, the fact that we are, look like we're unstable with a very high 40%, I think, turnover, is going to affect the review of our AAA rating.
Thank you for your comment. Just going to hold one second. Mr. Giacobi, can you opine on?
Why don't we do that at the end?
Okay, perfect. That's fine. We'll address your question around the sign at the end of the public comment.
Yeah, as long as you see it, if it's still there next week, I will know your answer.
So. Next.
My name is Dave Gruecock and we live at 20 Hickory Road since 1995. Really appreciate the opportunity for public comments. The purpose of my remarks is to comment about the postcards we've been distributed through the mail by a group calling themselves the Summit Democrats and to appeal to the council members who may be part of this group to suggest the group stop sending them. I think we have two members of the Summit Democrats. So the first one, in early May, we received a direct mail piece from the Summit Democrats about the Summit municipal budget and the irresponsible spending plans driving up Summit taxes by what they referred to as the new Republican-led Common Council. One of the few data points in this mailer noted 104.7% increase in the capital budget. That big number got my attention, but it also seemed a little odd, so I dug into it. The fine print on the card about the massive 104.7 capital budget increase included a reference to page 36 of the budget. Page 36 didn't provide any granularity, but on page 429, the detail for the capital budget began. The facts are that the 104% increase highlighted in the mailer was from a starting point of 1.99 million to an ending point of 4.07 million, so about $2 million, which is relatively small considering the size of the total budget. 1 million or approximately half of the total increase was allocated to a traffic signal improvement line item, which is noted as grant-funded. Other big chunks making up the other million bucks are related to the new athletic field at the high school, new bridges at the golf course, and the infrastructure improvements to many of our roads. My guess is that the Democrat members of our council voted to approve these capital improvements, too. So the $1 million capital expenditure not covered by a grant is being spent on things approved by the entirety of the Common Council, yet the headline on the mailer misleads the recipient to believe that the Republicans on the Common Council are out-of-control spenders. So as far as taxes go, our property taxes have more than tripled since we moved into our house in 1995. Through that time, we've had both Democrat and Republican majority Common Councils. So I believe a card like the one we received in May could have been developed every year for the past 29 years, cherry picking whichever budget numbers best serve the purpose of the sender, just like in this case. The second mailer just came at the end of August. This one had a big red slanted violator on the front with the words vacancies and another reference to Summit City Hall. The gist and intended takeaway of this piece is that the Republicans are running roughshod through City Hall, firing many of our valuable employees, and we're doomed as a city because, as the postcard asked, who's in charge at City Hall? Once again, this mail is inflammatory and lacks context. One of the questions was, why aren't the mayor or council being transparent and what's going on? What does that even mean? Here are a few reasons people leave their jobs, not in any particular order. Poor performance, inadequate compensation and benefits, lack of career advancement, burnout at work.
Sir, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
I'm wrapping up, sorry about that. Downsized or layoffs. So I just, what I want to say is that in nearly 30 years of living on Hickory Road, I can't recall another time when we got political hate mail from a local political organization. These mailers are most definitely not meant to be informational.
Sir.
And I'm done.
Sorry, thank you.
Sorry, it was so long, I practiced it in three minutes.
May I have your statement, sir?
Sir, I think there's some other people behind you. Mr. Wick.
I thought you were going to be president for a number of meetings, so I wanted to congratulate you first on becoming council president. It is an important responsibility. You get to set the agenda and the tone for these meetings and for our city, as do all of you. As a resident, I am rooting for you to be successful. In America, we should be able to speak truth to power and have our grievances heard. In eight months, this administration has been at odds with a number of important constituents in Summit. Clearly not, Mr. Gruecock. Number one, many of us feel indeed that the budget excessively increased taxes and spending and could exploit our debt. And I have numbers, I also read the budget. 75% of us who want outdoor dining wonder why it was canceled in a midnight announcement with no vote or public comment. We can't have a meaningful debate from faulty premises, so I will attach to my statement for the record, the transcript from the May 2nd, 2023 comments from our city solicitor explaining that it can be done legally, as Melbert did. Number three, many of us are concerned about an increased risk of a builder's remedy lawsuit since we are unlikely to meet our round three affordable housing obligations and we have not heard until this evening a word about how we will meet our deadlines for round four. Four, reasonable concerns expressed by faith leaders and others about the resident protection ordinance remain unaddressed nine months after council promised to address these concerns. Number five, the saga of the tackle lights and the proportion of our capital budget that was allocated to this field without allocating a penny to repairing the Anderson Field House, which it turns out everyone knew it was in dire need for renovation. And finally, the elephant in the room, decades of expertise have left City Hall in the last eight months, many of the departures unplanned and adding up to several hundred thousand dollars in unbudgeted settlement costs. To put this in a broader perspective, this year's presidential contest presents two contrasting views of power. One candidate believes in absolute power while the other candidate works within the American tradition of compromise, which, excuse me, which is the glue that holds our democracy together. Many prominent Republicans will not support Mr. Trump, including the last two Republican vice presidents, Dick Cheney and Mike Pence, and many Republicans who served in the last four Republican administrations. Closer to home, our state senator, John Bramnick, is running for governor as an anti-Trump Republican. These citizens recognize the danger of authoritarian impulses, which includes quieting dissent. As you take the reins of power, I encourage you to rethink how this council engages with those who disagree. Indeed, true governance requires compromise. To draw a distinction with a national Republican Party that has done precisely the opposite, you all run as a local politics team claiming to rise above partisan politics as you draped yourselves in our town colors. Your neighbors expect you to live up to this promise and make sure everyone is heard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. For those of you who don't know, my little guy and Diego's little guy are the best of buddies, so we'll have to talk about our kids, right?
That's what happens in a small town. That's why we have to be neighbor.
Absolutely. Thank you for your comment. And with that being said, are there any more public comments?
Claire Toth, T-O-T-H, at 11 Sunset Drive. I had asked a question two weeks ago that didn't get an answer, so I'm going to try again. On July 30th, council passed an update to the Stormwater Management Ordinance. There was no explanation of the ordinance, there was no discussion of it, and I would like to know in layperson's terms what was in the ordinance, what changed, and hopefully why it's better than what was there before. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
One is Krista Anderson recently left and I just wanted to acknowledge to everybody sitting in this room, if you're relatively new to Summit and you did not have the pleasure of working with Krista Anderson, you missed out. She was an asset to the town. She had a great way of telling you to go to hell and making you happy to be on your way. I was on a first-name basis with her. Mark, you're doing this again, and I would take care of it. To replace Krista Anderson is not going to be easy. And I want to give a lot of credit to this council as well, which is a relatively new council. This is a big turnover of more people than we've had on the council at one time in a long time. And I've been here over 30 years. And you got to give them a little time to get settled, you got to give them a little time to undo the damage that was done in the last administration as well. And I think you guys are doing a terrific job trying to move forward, all of you. And the last thing about the sidewalk, I live on Tanglewood, but I have 300 feet or so of sidewalk on Ashland. And it would be great not just to be able to go, it's dangerous walking on Ashland. And I don't think going Rotary to Silver Lake is enough. And if we're going to push the plan through, let's go for the whole thing, because it would add a lot of safety. I think it would add value to the town as well, that we have a safe road where you can walk, because my dogs will tell you if anybody ever walks by my house. I know every dog in the neighborhood and hundreds of people go by my house daily. But anyhow, it's going to be tough to replace. I know three of the people that left, they retired, they didn't leave because of the council, they didn't leave because they were unhappy with Summit. And if you guys have lived, anybody that's lived here for a long time, we're not easy. This town of people is demanding and they're trying, and how This town of people is demanding, and they're trying, and how Krista ever lasted the amount of time she did, it's amazing, and she's not really replaceable. So, give them a break, let them hire the right person, let them get another Krista Anderson, let them get quality people, and stop complaining, and give them a little break, and give them a little time to hire the right people.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Orrin.
Speaking of people who've been here a long time, my name is Gil Orrin, 45 Wallace Road in Summit.
Thank you, Gil. Hurry up. Time's wasted.
Listening to council meetings and being downtown, fortunately, for over 50 years, almost 60, there are certain things, opinions, you get. And I heard council meeting after council meeting since the beginning of the year, outdoor dining on Maple Street. And I am not in favor of it. I'll tell you why, and we have a very favorable conclusion to this problem, that I consider a problem. If I can put my glasses on. One council member has made it almost her main issue, and I respectfully disagree with her proposal to have outdoor dining on Maple Street. It's a main thoroughfare, and I'm not in favor of it being closed. First, about a year ago at a council meeting, Summit Solicitor, City Administrator, and Director of Community Services all agreed that closing Maple Street for outdoor dining was not feasible. Second, closing Maple Street for outdoor dining has become unnecessary because of the action taken by our downtown restaurants during the past two years. With people helping me, we made a survey of downtown, and during the pandemic, there was support, some support, for closing Maple Street for dining since outdoor restaurants could not use their entire restaurant space inside and the sidewalk in front outside due to COVID restrictions. Those restrictions were listed more than two years ago, and the restaurants have had full use of the restaurant space and the portion of sidewalks in front. How many restaurants do you think have taken advantage of outdoor dining downtown? Twenty-seven in the last two years, with over 500 seats for outdoor dining. I think the restaurants have done a great job, and anybody that wants to dine outdoors has 27 opportunities. As a result, Maple Street has one of our two main arteries, the other being Summit Avenue. To and from downtown Summit should remain open for cars and truck traffic. For those who enjoy outdoor dining, and I'm one of those persons, now have 27 opportunities for outside dining at a restaurant in downtown Summit.
Mr. Orrin, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap up.
Year-round weather remain. Three minutes.
Thank you, sir, Semper Fi. Public comments? Mr. Jaxel.
Daniel Jaxel, 28 Morris Avenue. I just want to reinforce what Gil has said, because Maple Street keeps coming up, and the businesses have moved on. COVID is over, they've put tables and chairs out, he says it's over 500 tables and chairs. So I don't understand why this keeps, last week it was brought up, well, maybe, it's schools out, tables out, it's, why don't we do it seasonally, but we can't define a season? We're beating ourselves up, and the businesses have moved on. They know what to do. If we want destination Summit, we have it. We have restaurants that are taking advantage of it with seating, with a lot that we can, SDI, I remember when they were talking about their budget, they said, "Well, we put some money in case we have to put tables on Maple Street." No, you don't. What you gotta do is promote what you have in the present. You know, it's been how many years since COVID, and the businesses are doing it, I think is what Gil is saying, so there's no need to just constantly convolute as to how exactly we're gonna make this work. We have, the tables and the chairs are safe, and they're legal, and there's a lot that Summit could do to advertise what's going on now. We don't have to do it, we just constantly keep coming back to Maple Street, and it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Thank you for your comment. Any more public comments?
Hi, Dori Gagnon, 27 Bedford Road. So, I have to say, and I want to ask you a question. Mr. Vartan, you're in charge of the Summit Democratic Party, correct? You're also a council member, correct? And Mr. Grucock is correct that he did get two mailers from the Summit Democratic Party. I also got them too. So, I get them, and I'm like, now that you're in charge of the Democratic Party, you also have an oath as a council member that you should help all the citizens, 22,000 residents, I think there are, here in the city of Summit. But, you know, I read your council page, and here you are calling all members to come out to council meetings because you're upset with so many different things, public comment, new council members, park line, that's one. And then you posted on your SMDC page, "Come out," uproar, right? Now, Trump did that, right? And it was, come, you know, march the Capitol people, and it was a big uproar. It's the same thing you're doing. You're like calling all of Summit to come here and attack council chambers because you're upset. And you think it's funny. It's not funny. We're trying to calm down the city here, and you're causing all of this uproar. For what? Nobody understands it. I don't find it funny. I don't think anybody here finds it funny. Michael Rogers said he closed Maple Street illegally. If that was corporate America, he would have been fired, but he was still here. Broad Street West, $17 million firehouse there, with how we're paying for it now. So, we have all of these unknowns, and everyone's scratching their head saying, "Why, why is everyone leaving?" I don't know, let's think about it. Oh, the budget went, we have, our taxes are going up, how are we paying for it? Like, what's unknown? And then you're saying, "Come to council and ask all these questions," and, oh, I mean, what are you doing? You can't have, you can't be in charge of one thing, sit up here and try to represent 22,000 people, and then vote no for Tara and her property that you messed up. You have to do the right thing once in a while. Just think about it before you send it out, or have somebody take over one or the other, or resign, like Lisa did. Think about it.
Thank you for your comment. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am, can I have your name and your, ma'am?
Maritza Cutérez, 26 Rosa Place.
I'm sorry, I just can hear you.
Maritza.
I'm sorry.
26 Rosa Place.
Thank you.
I was leaving, and I had to come back. Greg, I want to thank you for being there for us. Thank you for notifying us what's going on with the Phase 3 of the park line. We've been there almost 30 years, and not even until today, we've been notified what's going on. So I thank you. You have a lot of support from many of us.
Thank you for your comment.
Tracy Keegan, 15 Sweetbrier Road. I just want to make a comment about the firehouse, it's being paid for by a 40-year bond, so we're okay with that. There's been a lot of happy talk tonight, there's actually been some good news from some community groups, which I was happy to see, but since the Together for Summit team took control of council, our community has been plagued by toxicity. Faith leaders speaking up about equity and inclusivity are ignored and insulted, disparaged, doxxed, and harassed. Mr. Boyer even went on multiple outlets like Fox News to claim he is being victimized by them. The Together for Summit Republicans just stole a council seat, although Mike McTernan was a good choice, when the council president resigned a few days after the deadline where an election must be held for that seat. Now, the head of the Summit Republican Party, not the voters, got to choose her replacement. Mayor Fagan campaigned on availability but canceled nearly 30%, I'm sorry, she canceled more than 20 of her weekly mayor's office hours, and then broke tradition by abruptly switching to an appointment-only system. Why can't she be bothered to hold open office hours? Community leaders have been slandered by a city attorney who was here earlier, who accused them of seeking profit in their suggestion to build an all-affordable building on the former firehouse site. Mr. Smallwood and Ms. Hamlet disparaged residents for asserting their First Amendment rights to gather on the Village Green, and then, in Mr. Smallwood's case, turned around and disparaged the head of SDI just this past weekend, when she politely requested that the downtown event be free of campaigning, which I think would be a rough impression for all of us. Mr. Smallwood ignores constituent questions on his council Facebook page, posting laugh emojis and snarky "I'm out of office" comments on the page. Mr. Palowski ran on the importance of tough but civil questions, but once he was elected, suggested that public comment is a privilege, not a right. The Republican council sets a timer before every public comment and then yells those speakers down if they go even seconds over their allotted limit. Residents who disagree with the actions of Together for Summit majority are physically confronted and verbally abused by Republican supporters during and outside council meetings, and constantly on social media, especially in the toxic Residents for Summit group. Republican supporters record their neighbors on phones during council meetings and even during meeting breaks. Some residents are even falsely accused of committing crimes, which is slander per se and which has affected me personally. None of this is ever addressed by the Republican council, and all of it serves to intimidate those who dissent. And as we heard at a council meeting this summer, residents are trolled over inappropriate late-night DMs by Ms. Hamlet. Which brings me to my final point.
I'm gonna ask you to wrap up.
When our elected officials don't abide by the rules, it hurts all of us. Ms. Hamlet, your communications around the issues with presidents were Oprah.
I'm gonna ask you to wrap up.
My point is being proven right now. But you, excuse me, you did not turn over.
Ms. Keegan, your time is up, please. Your time is up. May I have your statement, please? It'll be three minutes.
Excuse me, ma'am. Chief, have this woman removed.
No, that is not right. Please.
No, it's not.
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
And that, gentlemen, you have spoken three times tonight, so seven.
That's right. Hello, I'm Susan Bowen, 45 Waldron Avenue, and my dirty little secret is that I spend all day, every day on Zoom calls. So I have quite a amount of time to peruse the internet, and I'm struck, as a 61-year Summit resident, by the difference in the past two years, and it's not right. I was here on July 9th, I saw real hatred, and I wish I hadn't. I think there's plenty of room for disagreement, but hatred, screaming, accusations of bribery, terrible accusations about Councilman Boyer, there's no place for it here. There's no place for it. There are 22,000 of us, and I would posit that 21,500 of us don't know how each other votes and don't particularly care because we are residents of Summit, and we love Summit, and we chose Summit, and we chose to be in a collegial atmosphere. And I think I appreciate that this council is toning it down. I think we all need to tone it down. There's no room for hatred, we're a small community, and that's my comment.
Thank you for your comment.
Monique Taylor, 167 Passaic Avenue. Instead of being agents of change, the Republican Majority Council are agents of chaos and division, voting barely a month in office to implement the Resident Protection Ordinance, the language of which is deeply problematic and dangerous, especially to folks of color, and six months later, voting to sell property that could be used to satisfy our affordable housing obligations while lying to residents of Weaver, Glenwood, and Vito Gallo about plans to rehab their buildings, posting on Facebook, "Let's take care of home base first." So where are your plans? Or are they just concepts of a plan? And what happened to I-4 100% affordable housing declarations from Palowski and Boyer at the candidate forum last fall? It's as if you can't rehabilitate current housing options and build more affordable housing. No, Republican council members would rather spend their time disparaging, maligning, and intimidating residents, volunteers, clergy, and community leaders, and sticking your online trolls like Kevin McGoye, Rich Ford, and Dori Gagnon, and others to surveil, threaten, harass, and defame, one even mentioning in a Facebook post to me that he had guns at his hall. I didn't ask, so why would you offer that information? And another wanting to weaponize the police, Mr. Jacoby, who, those are people who are merely exercising their First Amendment rights at council meetings. You shouldn't be calling Chief Zagorski to remove anyone. Beginning with last year's bid to cancel the Pride Festival, using the vicious and homophobic attacks from the Republican former treasurer and championed by Hamlet and Allen, to the fictitious and vengeful drama fabricated by Boyer meant to sully this year's Juneteenth celebration, I've been made aware of a similar attempt by Boyer during the MLK event last January, the difference being in that case that the resident was a white senior who told Boyer that there are no speeches given at this annual celebration. So I wonder why there was no rant then, no crying to your supporters about how you were discriminated against. My guess is that you wouldn't get much sympathy from white women who think you're a good guy. Make no mistake, Summit, this is a coordinated effort to undermine our community events, especially those uplifting the principles of equity, diversity, and inclusion. At the Arts and Crafts Festival on Sunday, I met a resident who said to me, "I've never seen it like this before," and I think.
I'm gonna ask you to wrap up.
Yeah, I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, well, she spoke during the affordable housing.
You didn't do a comment. Okay.
Vicki Letterman, Clark Street. I'd like to welcome our new city administrator. I hear city staff are thrilled with your hire and the changes you've already made. Summit is a wonderful town, except for a couple of loud-mouthed devices, political hacks, and a pathetic outside agitator who make up crises, Summit's just fine. Through you, council president, Greg, you have yet to answer anything. If you had no clue why some staff are leaving, then what the hell are you doing up there? Do you think you have a conflict of interest when, as a councilman, you snidely imply your colleagues caused the resignations? Think you're invading staff's privacy? Do you have any idea how juvenile and unprofessional your behavior is? If you have a problem with your colleagues, you discuss it like an adult in closed session. Regarding Lisa's resignation, maybe if you were more grown-up and less partisan, you would have gotten more notice. Do you understand that being an elected official is not about your wishes being city staff's command or speeches and photo ops? It's doing the mundane things that help citizens and solve problems. Your job is serving the Cochera's, the Weaver Street residents when their plumbing backs up, peoples whose homes have been broken into, and the people who live next to the Salt Brook. If you can't do the real work and your only interest is partisan politics and photo ops, then get the hell off council. Lastly, I commend the rest of you for having the fortitude to replace political and dysfunctional staff who weren't showing up or doing their jobs properly, whether they left by their choice or yours, and replacing them with competent apolitical professionals. It's the job of council and the mayor to make sure the best. It's the job of council and the mayor to make sure the best staff are in place, doing the best job for Summit without regard for party. No wonder morale is up and Tracy Keegan, who gets so hysterical over an embellish calls 911, is hyperventilating. Again, Democrats have lost five seats in a row because people are sick of the ridiculous political divisiveness and obstructionism. No one's falling for it. I will vote Democrat again when the party denounces and kicks out the whack-job haters, gets back to sanity and bipartisanship, and stops wasting everybody's time with these manufactured crises. It's what they do. This is what they do, even though it's not good for Summit and it loses elections. Not to mention the gross fiscal mismanagement and at least three potential lawsuits under Greg's tenure, our newest council members were not elected because they're Republicans, but because of how they act in the best interests of the city and do the work without regard for party politics. Thank you for continuing to stay focused on what's good for Summit in the face of all the divisive drivel. To paraphrase Kamala Harris, "It's time to turn the page on divisiveness, it's time to bring our city together."
Thank you for your comment. If there are no more public comments, then I will be closing the public comment session. Ms. Keegan.
You already spoke.
I'd like to make a comment.
Ma'am, you have rules. Three minutes. You're out of order.
Someone just mentioned my name.
No, you're out of order.
And council meeting.
You got off and spoke, you're out of order. Sit down, you're not allowed to speak again.
I just want to remind the person that.
No, no. Ma'am, you can take it. Ma'am, chief, chief, come on in. Ma'am, chief, chief, please remove Ms. Keegan from the dais. Thank you.
Please call the room to order.
This is intimidating people from calling 911.
Chief, no, chief.
Chief.
Chief, no, chief.
This is intimidating people from calling 911. Kevin McGoye.
Have her removed.
Can you please tell people how dangerous this is?
Removed.
Chief, please take Ms. Keegan outside. If she wants.
She already spoke.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period. I'm just going to ask that everybody just.
Guys, we're in a meeting. Thank you.
I'm going to close the public comment period, and I'm going to try to address as many questions as I can with our professionals. Matt.
So there's been comments about the First Amendment. First off, this is called an open public meeting.
I'm really asking for everybody to just give us 15 more minutes here or so, let's just try to get through this.
It's called an open public meeting. In an open public meeting, it's the meeting of the common council. Public meetings have a public comment session, and the law is very, very clear. The law is clear that you can control and mandate how long you let people speak for. We have rules, there've been rules for as long as I've been here where they have time limits on speakers. You don't have a right to continually address its public comment. Again, you're here to watch the council do business and you can make comments. This council, and I've said it before, this council affords people multiple comments, on-agend items, non-on-agend items, on items, resolutions that were discussed in closed session. People have multiple times to speak about business. There was a comment about, and I wouldn't call it, it was billboard, it's not a billboard, somebody has decals in the back of their car. We live in this country, it's called America, there's a First Amendment right. We do not have the right to tell somebody to take decals off the back of their car that others find objectionable. Sometimes the First Amendment allows objectionable speech. This isn't objectionable speech, this is political speech. And so, we are not going to tell somebody, a city employee, what they can and can't have on their bumper stickers. If we do that, sir, ma'am.
Is that what you mean?
Sir, ma'am.
Are you weaponizing the office?
Ma'am, ma'am. Chief, 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 if this woman, chief.
Are you weaponizing the office?
If this woman does again, you're going to have, she's going to have to leave.
They're speaking out of turn.
And you know, it's incredible, I didn't interrupt people when they spoke, but when I'm speaking, I'm getting interrupted. That's just rude. That's not how you treat one another. It's unbelievable that people just think they can speak over everyone. People should have some civility in this room and just civility to one another and not interrupt. The last couple of meetings ago, I was told to shut up.
That was me.
Well, there you go again. You should learn some civility, ma'am.
You should as well.
And so, the First Amendment, if people have bumper stickers or decals on their car, we are not advising them that they have to take them off. That would subject the city to First Amendment litigation. I'm actually defending a school district where the superintendent did just that. He told an employee to remove a sign that was in the back window of his car. Depending in Passaic County right now, I'm defending it because that was a violation of the First Amendment. We're not going to do that. We live in America, there's speech that could be objectionable, guess what? You have to deal with it. That's America. I don't know if there's any other questions that you have for me?
I think that was, that was it. Did you want to discuss any of the city personnel questions?
Well, first off, we don't discuss reasons why folks decide to leave the city. People leave, some gentlemen said it perfectly, people leave for all different reasons. No one, people, 70%, that's all nonsense. This city is well-run, you have incredible professionals, actually, you probably have the best clerk I've ever met in all of my travels in Rosie Luth Heath. I mean, frankly, you could probably fire half the city staff and just let Rosie run it, and it'll be perfect. By the way, she brought in some really good figs that she grew too, so she's also good. But you have incredible city staff. You have a CFO who is incredible, incredible engineering group led by Aaron. You have great professionals, people change. And the one thing I was told long ago by my father was, nobody's irreplaceable, so don't think that. People are replaceable, and is change difficult? Of course it's difficult, but guess what? With change, good things often come. So you have a very seasoned interim manager here, Tom Tucci, who was the manager for Cedar Grove for decades and retired. He's also the chairman, the chairman of the Passaic Valley Sewage Commission, which is the biggest sewage plant east of the Mississippi. He runs the biggest sewage plant east of the Mississippi. And so, this city is very fortunate to have somebody serving as an interim administrator for the next several months. Well, we look for a city administrator. But at the end of the day, people have the right to leave. People are, again, we live in America. Nobody is forced to stay at certain employees. People make decisions to depart, and we treated each and every one of them with kindness and dignity, and frankly, all this rhetoric is not treating them with kindness and dignity. Each one of these people served the city very, very well and did a lot of great things, and we should thank them for their service and let them go find whatever journey they want to go on. That's their decision, not anyone on this council, and no one can force them to stay. So I hope that people understand that when we enforce the three-minute rule, we treat everybody the same. You speak for three minutes. You don't get a yell from the audience, you don't get to disrupt people, and when people get up and make comments, and then somebody else comments about them, that's between two private citizens. They can address that on their own. But again, I think everyone needs to be a little bit more civil to one another in these chambers, and just more civil to one another generally. Because I can tell you, I've definitely seen a lack of civility over the last several years where neighbors are saying horrible things about each other. It doesn't make Summit a better place. And frankly, if you want to attract good employees, another gentleman, I forget who he was, said it perfectly, Summit residents are a demanding group, and they should be. They pay a lot of taxes and it's a great city to live in. But you want to make sure that you're able to attract top-quality people to work here. If I got on, if I was going to come here as a city administrator and I watched this meeting, I don't know, it would give me a little pause for concern. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Jacoby. On a lighter note, the gentleman that came up and spoke about the zoning officer, we are very close on hiring a wonderful zoning officer. I wish I could give you more detail, but we've spent a long time looking for a zoning officer, and we're excited to share that announcement in the next couple of weeks. Director Schreger, could you opine? And Claire, your question is a good one, and we did not get back to you. So thank you for your question. And I meant to ask you, Director Schreger, after last meeting, and I did not get a chance. So Claire, I just want to acknowledge your question, say thank you.
Yes, through you, council president, the original major changes to the Storm Board Ordinance took place in March of 2021. That is when the ordinance was revamped significantly, primarily impacting what's classified as major development, which is defined by NJDEP. In brief, it's just if you're adding a quarter acre of new impervious or disturbing an acre of land, it would kick in. The revisions that were made in July were relatively minor, it is just that the state, since we adopted ours in 2021, the state put forth new requirements primarily related to the design flood elevations and some other, you know, more minor definitions and items that were in their general ordinance. The city did just adopt the recommended state ordinance, basically verbatim, so we didn't go above and beyond it at all. So that's in regards to what was adopted July, and it was the deadline, we were required to do it, just to make sure our ordinance met the state's requirements. But separately, you know, just speaking from caps, we do have certain ordinances that are being circulated that we are going to be considering throughout this year just because we are aware of some change in weather patterns and we're seeing an influx of drainage complaints. So that is on our docket to keep looking at, we have those circulated, and hopefully that will result, combined with some recommendations from the planner and ordinance changes moving forward.
And then specifically, I think, one question I meant to ask you, was there something, I think Claire had mentioned we were supposed to submit something and we did not submit something, I don't know if you caught that part of the question, but we can look into that this week.
Yeah, I can reach out to Claire directly just to find out, but if it was, this ordinance did have to go to the county and the state that we did adopt it within the time we were supposed to. Yes, truth be told, we were seven days late, but that's fine, just because it's the way our meeting fell.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate you hanging in there with us tonight. Yes, so at this point, if any council members have any comments, I would welcome them.
I just wanted to, and hopefully our city treasurer could help answer this question. I believe one of the only things that would potentially, it wouldn't necessarily be departures of our city staff, but that would affect our bond rating, but it's more of our, I believe we have a 99% collection rate on our taxes, that would affect our bond rating. Is that correct?
So through you, council president, partially, yes. I just had three rating calls. Summit has always engaged since I've arrived here in getting a rating by all three credit rating agencies. So having just sold bonds for the school, because we're a type-one school district, the city issues debt on behalf of the school, the school pays for it, but I issue it for them. So I engaged in those rating calls with Moody's, Fitch, and Standard &amp; Poor's in August. They did all three reaffirm our AAA rating. It has been that way since before I got here and has remained that way. They do have a plethora of things they look at. When you go on these calls, you're on for anywhere from a half hour to an hour or more. They go through a series of questions, even like weather resiliency, and it's a whole array. I don't know how much, you know, what the ratio is, they don't define that for you or disclose how much different things take into account. They do ask you about your debt policies, they do ask you about your management practices and your employment, they do ask you about litigation, they do ask you, I mean, it runs the gamut, and they all kind of ask similar questions with a little different caveat here and there. But I don't see, as long as the city maintains the way that we're going and the way that we handle debt and the fiscal responsibility that we have, I don't see an issue with a change as long as we have people coming into positions. We do have an interim administrator, as mentioned, that has experience. We still have a lot of staff members here that do have experience. I don't see that affecting our bond rating in a negative way at this point.
Thank you. And I just wanted to mention also, Mr. Orrin's comments regarding the number of restaurants, I forgot to write down the number of restaurants, I believe you said 27, but I do know there's only three restaurants in town that do not offer outdoor dining. And that's Finn, Fiorino's, and, I might crush the name, Ani Ramen Noodles are, I believe, the only three restaurants that do not have outdoor dining, at least that I counted. Most of the other restaurants do offer some outdoor dining, and I know that the reason why Fiorino's and Finn is because our sidewalks are not large enough for them to put tables out there. All of the other restaurants, from our diners to our fine dining, do offer outdoor dining. So I just want to mention that as well.
Thank you. Are there any other council member comments or updates from your committee?
Well, yeah, but I'll go last, if you want to.
I'll go after you.
Okay. I have a number of things I'd like to mention. The first is lawn signs. Stop messing with the lawn signs, folks. I know candidate Calmington had a post recently, a bunch of her signs got knocked down, that's wrong. I know a bunch of Don Nelson's signs have been knocked down. Thankfully, at least to my knowledge, none have been torn up and destroyed like Jamels and I were last year, but once these lawn signs go on somebody's yard, it's their property, so you're destroying somebody else's property. And, you know, it's their right to say who it is that they want to support, so please have respect, it's embarrassing already. Second, on Maple Street, I'm not, I won't sing gill, but you're preaching to the choir. I think everybody knows that. On public comment, brace yourself, I agree with Mr. Hoick. Let's put it back to the front, let everybody talk after everything, I don't mind staying a little later. It's how we've done it recently, and, you know, I think it went okay tonight, but I think if you were trying to shorten the meeting, you could have not done that, and we probably would have saved about 10 minutes of people complaining about the change to public comment. Let's see, Trump on a car. If it was toth on a car, would anybody have complained? Yeah. It would have just been Republicans complaining, right? So it's all protected people. Sometimes the First Amendment allows objectionable speech, and that's exactly why we need it. I think we all know that. SDI, I think somebody said that they sent out a friendly request that there's no campaigning? Read it for yourselves. It was not a friendly request, it was an attempt to tell the candidates what's what, and you're not allowed to do this. So I thought that was a mistake, and I thought it was a bit of overreach by the executives at SDI. So I wasn't going to revisit Juneteenth, I really didn't want to, but I did have some comments that I never gave previously, and since Ms. Taylor brought it up again today, I'm going to say what I have to say. So at the July 30th council meeting, Katia Negron made a statement with which I cannot agree, and so I'll get my, I just want to give everybody my thoughts and my experience with what happened on the record. Ms. Negron said she was speaking on behalf of the Summit Anti-Racism Committee of the Interfaith Council and would like to enter into the record the following statement: "The Anti-Racism Committee and the Summit Interfaith Council were not involved in the planning of the Summit Juneteenth event. All statements claiming either organization was involved are mistaken and incorrect." So for the record, by email dated May 3rd, Monique Taylor informed the city that, quote, "The Anti-Racism Committee and Beth Hattikawa would like to sponsor a table for the Juneteenth celebration." Last month, the city received a check for $200 from the Summit Interfaith Council Anti-Racism Committee for its Juneteenth table, and a handwritten note from Ms. Negron stating, "This check is for our participation." 'This check is for our participation in Juneteenth.'" So, perhaps there's a semantical difference between planning and participating, but I thought the public would be interested in these facts, along with the fact that several members of the Anti-Racism Committee were on the Juneteenth Planning Committee, regardless of whether they participated in any official Anti-Racism Committee capacity. Ma'am, you have to stop.
No, I'm asking. I'm asking a question of-
Public comment is closed.
No, he brought up my name.
Doesn't matter. Chief?
It's not a so. He's lying.
I'll also note that the Anti-, that the Interfaith Council was listed as a part of the Planning Committee on a city press release months before the event, and it was not until after the event and after the controversy that the Interfaith Council requested it be removed from that press release. I see this as damage control and just a belated effort to distance itself from the controversy. I have some additional thoughts and facts to share about this matter. At the February 6th, 2024 council meeting, Councilman Boyer discussed his experience growing up in Summit. "I heard it with my own ears, people mocking him from the gallery." "I am black. We can agree on that," Councilman Boyer asked. "That's debatable," Ms. Taylor shouted from the gallery. Reverend Rod Williams wiggled his hand as if to say, "Sort of. I was there. I heard it. I saw it. Many of you did too." The public can decide for itself what to make of it. Unfortunately, though, this was a continuation of treatment Councilman Boyer experienced on social media during our campaigns. Leading up to Juneteenth, I, and at least some other council members, believed Councilman Boyer was speaking at the event. We were looking forward to it, as I know Councilman Boyer was. Folks at the Department of Community Programs confirmed it back in February, and they are certain that they told the rest of the Juneteenth Planning Committee. But what if there was a miscommunication? What if they just plain didn't tell the other committee members? Councilman Boyer is the first black councilman in Summit. Why wouldn't the Juneteenth Planning Committee have him on the list of speakers to begin with? I'm not saying he should have been the keynote speaker, as former Councilwoman Hairston once was, but nobody thought to say during the months of planning, "How about Jamel?" That it crossed nobody's mind is untenable to me, and it leads me to believe certain people wanted to exclude him. When it did become clear that Councilman Boyer wanted to speak and that the city wanted him to speak, the Planning Committee initially refused. Why? I heard talk at the July 9th meeting about how the event was timed to the second, but anyone who attended the Juneteenth event knows that wasn't the case. So, why? When the city made it very clear that Councilman Boyer would speak at the event over their objection, the Planning Committee offered a compromise to allot 45 seconds to each of seven council members. Seems to me that this was a measure designed to limit Councilman Boyer. If he's going to speak, let's make it as short as possible. But let's take the Planning Committee members who spoke on July 9th at their word and assume there was a timing commission, a timing issue. The committee allotted five minutes and 25 seconds to the seven council members. As Councilwoman Allen took the mayor's slot, there's an extra 45 seconds. I, Councilwoman Hamlet, and Councilwoman Smallwood offered our time to Councilman Boyer. Let's call it another 90 seconds, because Councilman Smallwood did ultimately speak. Andy Miniger was on vacation. There's another 45 seconds. So, since timing really wasn't an issue, why not give Summit's first black councilman a few extra minutes of time? Ms. Taylor suggested on July 9th that the committee didn't want it to be too partisan. I don't even know what that's supposed to mean, but the solution apparently was to invite five Republicans and two Democrats to speak instead of simply giving Councilman Boyer a slot. At the Juneteenth celebration I witnessed, Ms. Taylor's eyes glued to her watch as Councilman Boyer spoke. There are photos of it online. Don't take my word for it. Go see for yourself. Ms. Taylor, after consulting with Reverend Williams, interrupting Councilman Boyer to tell him to wrap it up. Reverend Rod Williams attempting to clap Councilman Boyer off the stage. Why? At the July 9th, 2024 council meeting, we witnessed, in my opinion, much disdain for Councilman Boyer. Anyone who didn't see it can watch it on YouTube and decide for themselves. Ms. Taylor spoke about what she characterized as Councilman Boyer's, quote, "Claim they don't consider me back, black," and waved her hand up and down towards him, shouting, "It's obvious." We don't need to relive it all here today, but I will note that when Councilman Boyer finally had the opportunity to speak that night, former Councilwoman Hairston stood up and led a bunch of people from the gallery, turning their backs on him and walking out before he can finish. Of course, that's their absolute right, but when I put all this together, I come to the inescapable conclusion that some members of the Juneteenth Committee, in particular the most vocal members of the Interfaith Council's Anti-Racism Committee, just don't like Jamel. Why? Because he's a black American who has a different political philosophy? Because he disagrees with them on certain issues? Take my comments however you will, just think for yourself.
Thank you. Are there any other council member comments? Mr. Barkan?
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to work backwards through the public comments and just try to keep it brief. So, in response to Ms. Letterman, people should just never be discouraged from calling 911. That's where we'll keep that. All right. In response to Dory, Ms. Gagnon, I have definitely heard better impressions of myself. Michael did not say, Michael did not say that Maple Street was closed illegally, because it wasn't. What was made very clear was that the only thing missing from the process was a letter from Summit sent to the DOT explaining that we did this exactly the same way Milburn did it. So, we'll go next to Mr. Orin, which is on the same topic. So, Maple Street closure to vehicles made Summit a destination. There was a vibe. We felt it. We saw it, the dancing in the street. The businesses, however, have not moved on. SDI now has data. They have what's called Placer AI, which gathers aggregate cellphone data and visits of people to the downtown, and they are tremendously, tremendously lower than they were a couple of years ago when we had the closure of Maple Street. And it's not just on the closure of Maple Street. It measures the entirety of the downtown. It measures, it measures Beechwood. It measures Union Place. And it is clear, from talking to business owners this year, that this was not a great summer, and I think it is our responsibility to talk about the things that are different, and that's one of them, that is different. All right. Backing up a little bit further, I don't think I have anything here on this page. I agree with Diego and Bob. I think if we just went back to the way the comments were now at this point, we probably would have saved the time, but you know me. I like to get the business done first, and then we do the public comments at the end. But I do think we need to give, we need to give our explanation of the, of what's happening with the resolution, and then give the community the opportunity to ask us questions on it. I will also agree with, I will agree with everybody that's talked about the signs on cars. I will respond to Mr. Gruecock. Actually, I did vote against the budget for the reasons I described at the time, that include I did not feel it was necessary to raise taxes to the maximum percent, and I thought we should have cut more on the capital budget. I will back up further. Mr. McCurdy, I do think we need to give the community an outline of how we are going to fill these positions, and then I'll wrap up my response to the public comments with the sort of theme that was in there, right? Which is the partisanship, the desire, I think, by some that there should not be politics, there should not be partisan politics in our, in our local races, and that, and that local politics shouldn't, local government shouldn't have anything to do with state or national issues. And the unfortunate, I guess, for those folks' reality is just that that's not the case. The context, the context of our government, the context of our political reality is that everybody here chooses to affiliate with a party, and everybody here has run and won affiliated with that party. So, I'm proud to be a member of the Democratic Party and to support our nominee for president. I'm assuming the others here on the dais are also proud to be members of their party because of the partisan political activities in which they engage, including being members of the Republican Committee, going to the Union County Nominating Convention, and going to fundraisers for state and national political figures. So, I'll say three things in closing. Number one is, there are those seeking to bring the politics of personal grievance to this city in order to distract. Two, there are very many serious issues that we need to address, and they include affordable housing, our financial situation, and yes, the vacancies that we have at City Hall. We, my third thing is, we as a council need to address them for the people that we serve, and we need to do it in the context of a very heated political environment. So, we have to figure that out, but I'll start by saying I'm incredibly thrilled to have my old friend, Mike McTiernan, back, and I look forward to raising a glass with you. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Kevin, I'm just, I'm going to give it to Jamel, and then-
I'm going to be like two seconds. It was, I, thank you, Greg, for reminding me, because I meant to say, thank you, Michael, for stepping up and being able to do this again. I know you've been on council for two terms, and you were council president, and it takes a lot of work, and I really appreciate you, you being here, and I'm looking forward to working with you on council.
Thank you. Council President, can I go before Jamel? Because I heard you should never follow him.
No.
First off, I just want to thank everyone for welcoming me back on the dais. It's an honor to serve the city of Summit, and it's an honor to be thought of as a replacement for a wonderful council president that was Lisa Allen. So, she has shoes, big shoes to fill, and I'm happy to be on the dais to try my best to do that. You know, a lot of people have asked me, like, "Why are you doing this?" And it reminds me of when I, where I used to work, I can't remember if it was Ruben or Paulson, it was my boss's 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 boss. He, he left our company, and he went to be the Treasury Secretary, and he told the staff, "When you get the call to serve, you should take it, and it's kind of your patriotic duty." Now, this is not the Treasury Department at the White House, but I feel as passionately about Summit as I feel at any place in America. This is where I grew up, or where my kids grew up. I've lived here for 23 years. My kids have gone through the school system, and it's been a wonderful place to raise a family. And I really didn't have a good reason to say no. So, it was a reason, so my wife could have found a reason, but I do want to thank her. She's always supported me whenever I've decided to do something that she raises her eyebrows about, and she did this time, too. She would have been the only person why I wouldn't be here if she told me I shouldn't be able, shouldn't do this for whatever reason, and she didn't. So, I love her, I respect her, and I thank her for letting me do this. I will say, just being up here, kind of scratching my head a little bit, a lot's changed in a few years. The tone's changed in a few years, and sadly, I can't say it's for the better. I think, you know, I get it. People have passions. They should be passionate about what they believe in, and they should be able to express it. I will say, though, how you express it sometimes can detract from what you are saying. You only remember how they said it, not what they said. And I don't go a lot on social media, so if people want to talk to me, they can send me a note, and I will have a phone call, or I'll have a coffee or drink with you, like normal human beings used to do, rather than engaging over social media. What I just witnessed here tonight was a, this was like a Facebook page fight, but in person. It's embarrassing. It really kind of is. This shouldn't be how neighbors speak to neighbors. We all are in the same town, and I understand that, you know, people have different political views. I completely agree with Councilman Vartan, that people should express their political views. I disagree when that passion, that, you know, vitriol, like it's a black or white issue at the national level, seeps down into your to Summit. We're neighbors. We have different political views. That is okay. I teach social studies. I like what Mr. Jacoby said. You can't have civilization without civil. You just can't have it, and we should be civil to each other. Okay? So, you know, one of the things I hope we can do up here is try and have meetings that are civil. We want to hear people. I want to hear people. You should be able to express what you want to say, but let's not attack our neighbors. Let's not attack council people. You know how many people you convince on a Facebook post to change their mind? Zero. No one's ever changed their mind on a Facebook post, and in this little meeting we just had, guaranteed, no one's minds were changed. Okay? So, let's just try and get back to being neighbors. That would be my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take, I think we're, you're obviously here for a reason, so thank you for your comments, and thank you for your leadership. So, Jamel, I'm just going to ask you to, what's that?
Well, Jamel, I deserve that.
No, go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Andy. Yeah, you can go.
So, Greg just touched on this, and Mr. McTiernan, you actually just touched on this as well. And I'm going to talk about just one thing that I think is a little bit difficult to talk about, but I think it will actually hopefully change some minds. It is not, it is not political. Ms. Leaderman? You and I, I know you remember this, you and I had a long conversation on the green several months ago while we looked together at the plans for the future of Maybe Playground. You remember this day. I had really never spoken with you before at any length, and until then, and so it was actually, the only way that I actually got to know you a little bit was that conversation, and to hear what you thought about, stuff unrelated to politics, hear about the plans and the park. It was, it was a good conversation. I, you said something to me that day that made an impact on me. I don't know if you remember this. You told me that at one time you felt unsafe. You remember saying that?
No, I remember saying I was bad enough.
I'm just going to ask, just, we can't have a back and forth with the council. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'll trust that you remember some stuff, but I remember you saying to me that you have, you had felt unsafe at times, and that you considered leaving, and I was taken aback by that, and I thought to myself, and I even said it to you, I did not know you that well. I was direct to you, and I said, "Don't leave. Don't leave." Because it was, it hurt to hear that, and I, I just, my immediate reaction as a Summit neighbor was to say, "Don't leave. That's, that's not, that's not the right thing." When you feel unsafe, there are, of course, resources available to you, no matter what the problem is, and that is, the beauty of living in the city-like Summit is that, you know, we're really, really fortunate. We have resources that other towns don't. We have a great police department. We have a great fire department. We have first aid squad, volunteers that really do go above and beyond saving lives. Tons of friends and family around you. You've all lived here for a really long time. Vicky, I don't know how long you've lived here, but I'm assuming you have family and friends here, too. And really strangers who will reach out and help you without even thinking about it. At the drop of a hat, a stranger will reach out to you and help you. You can and should feel that you can reach out for assistance when you feel unsafe. But you surprised me tonight, and I'm going to keep this extremely respectful, because I know that, I know based on that conversation you told me, I know there's a bit of reciprocal feeling of unsafety. So, we'll just, I'll just say that. But one thing you said this evening in your last comment was about someone who I think you don't like, which is fine. That person made a difficult on-the-fly decision to call 911, right? When she felt unsafe. She literally saw something and said something. That is a motto, that is a, that is a- That is a motto, that is a, that is a, that's something we teach our kids to say, that's something we follow ourselves, when you see something, say something. Our police department, who we respect greatly in this town, they tell us to do that. This person literally thought in that moment that she had the responsibility to keep herself and those around her safe, and she took action. We teach others to follow it, it's a game plan we know saves lives. Thank God that the one tool we have in a moment in time right now in our country when there is gun violence and there's almost daily shootings at schools, the one tool we have is that we can reach out for help. We cannot disparage somebody who reaches out to the police for help. We cannot disparage somebody who reaches out for help in, in any way. No matter how much you may not like the person, we cannot disparage somebody for reaching out for help. That feeling of safety is important to me, like it is to anybody, and I know it is to you, and I, I know you understand what I'm saying here. The only way that I really know you is from that conversation, so I, I know that the desire to feel safe is, is important to you as well. I want you to feel safe here, and I want you to know that in moments of fear and potential threats to your safety, even perceived, Vicky, even, even if you're not sure, there's a hint that something bad is going to happen, you should be able to reach out for help if that's what's the right thing to do according to your perception. That goes for anyone here, anybody. We should teach our kids that it's okay to reach out for help instead of being scared to do so. Never, never make them scared to do so. Let them speak up. We cannot make a person feel ashamed or silly for making a split decision like that and, and being incorrect, so I'm really hoping that that is something I can impart to you today. This is, this is as genuine as I get, so that's all.
Thank you. Councilman Boyer, I'm going to ask, if you don't mind, just, I-
Are you going to give me 40 seconds to speak?
I was just going to say, just try to be brief, I'm looking at the audience, and I, I know you probably have a lot of profound things to say, but I-
Well, you know what, I gotta, I-
I'm just going to ask you to be brief.
Yeah, I get you, but I took a lot of heat today, so-
I apologize.
Please, please give me the due respect, like everybody else got to speak freely, and not give me 40 seconds.
I didn't say 40 seconds, I just said, keep it a little-
Everybody trying to give me 40 seconds all the time, you know? Forty-two, right? Well, listen, let's be clear. Criticism of the government is a vital component, and it leads to healthy democracy. You know, I get that. Questioning and debate, holding your leaders accountable, ensuring that the government serves the people. But there is a vast difference between constructive criticism and what we've witnessed here today, and actually continue to witness. You know, constructive criticism seeks to find solutions. It comes from a place of genuine concern for your city, your community, and your neighborhood, a desire to make things better. What we see from certain individuals, however, is not constructive, it's disruptive, it's hostile, and it serves no purpose other than to tear people down and undermine the good things that they try to do. These actions reflect a form of political hypocrisy. It's hypocrisy to demand accountability from others while refusing to engage in civil discourse yourself. It is hypocritical to claim to be fighting for the community while creating an environment of hostility and division. It is hypocritical to scream about transparency while spreading misinformation and refusing to participate in honest and open dialogue. We should never confuse volume with validity. The latter's voices are not always the most representative or most reasonable. We must remind ourselves that true leadership, true commitment to our community is not about shouting the loudest or tearing each other down. It's about listening, engaging, and working together to address the issues that we face. To those who attend these meetings and contribute positively, who raise concerns in respectful and thoughtful manner, I want to thank you. I appreciate that. Your involvement is invaluable, and it is through your efforts that we can continue to make progress. But to those of you who come only to disrupt and to hurl insults, I ask that you consider what you're really, truly contributing. If you are generally concerned about our community, then let's have a real conversation. Let's talk about solutions, not just problems, not just yelling and screaming at me, not just diatribe. My door is always open. I'll never hate any of you, I'll never respond to you on Facebook in a negative way. My mama always taught me to be a gentleman, and I'll continue to do that. And by the way, when people come up here and they say mean things at me, don't feel sorry for me, I got, I got thick skin. I rain on the beaches and, and sea dirt, I'll be all right. All I want from this community is to see my passion, to see my love for everyone. And by the way, Diego, I, I was draped in maroon and gold my entire life. I love this community, and that's why I'm up here. So I just ask everybody, especially in this highly-charged political climate, to be respectful of each other. And to be honest, it starts up here, too, as leaders, especially on social media, you It's not good discourse even for us to go back and forth and make this environment in our community more charged than it really is. Remember, we're all neighbors. We got children that go to the middle school, high school, elementary school together. It's not a good reflection on them as well. So, thank you for listening, I appreciate all of your concerns and all of your feedback, and we will continue to do our, our hardest, I was going to say damnedest, but we, we will continue to do our best to help each and every one of you. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for, for coming. Yeah, I, it kind of reminds me, I was like 20 or 21, and I went down to Fort Benning, which is not called Fort Benning anymore, and I signed up for airborne school, which I thought was going to be a good idea, until I started jumping out of the planes, and then I thought, you know, I called my mom and I said, you know, "I don't, I don't think I like jumping out of planes." And, and she said, "It's a little bit too late." And the first thing I did was, when I got into the Army, is I made sure I did not get assigned to an airborne unit, so. But with that being said, I want everybody to remember what I said at the beginning of the meeting, which is, at the, at the next meeting, I'm going to ask for council president nominations. But thank you for bearing with us.
You don't want to do the job anymore? Come on!
I got through one, I got through one, but, you know, I, as Mike said, you know, and Jamel, and, and, you know, Greg and Andy, you know, the, the funny thing is, what everybody doesn't realize is, we work pretty darn well in committee, all of us, Democrats and Republicans up here, and that's the truth. You know, I worked well with Andy in parking, Greg and I had a couple battles this week, but we kissed and made up, you know, we kissed and make up, but we made up. You know, we, we make up, and I think the important thing is, we're all doing, we're all doing the best we can, we've got to try to come together as a community, and I had some, I had some really good conversations with people today that I never thought, or this week, that I never thought would happen, and we're actually making a lot of progress. So hang in there, and we'll see you next week. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a, meeting is adjourned.